Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
AB-16 was adopted by the State Assembly in late May and is now at the State Senate awaiting approval. It's being called the biggest block party in LA as some of the top names in Hollywood come together for the Celebrate LA Festival which honors the city's diversity. And as Yana Kay tells us, the event also bids farewell to outgoing Mayor Villarosa. As music legend Stevie Wonder entertains the crowd, outgoing Mayor Antonio Villarosa captures the incredible moment on his camera. This block party not only celebrated the city's diversity, but also Villarosa's eight years as mayor.
Yes, it's an opportunity to say goodbye. But more importantly, it's an opportunity to celebrate who we are.
Mayor Villarosa was a big champion of so-called Heritage Month celebrations in which each community group was honored by the city for their accomplishments. This extravaganza paid tribute to that diversity with music and dance performances highlighting several cultures and traditions. And some of the biggest stars in Hollywood such as Ryan Seacrest headlined the event. Even former U.S. President Bill Clinton was there to help send off Mayor Villarosa.
He was faithful to the oath he swore to serve you, every single one of you. And this city, this state, and our nation are better as a result.
The spotlight also shined on mayorallect Eric Garcetti. He in turn thanked his predecessor for his contributions, especially for his legacy in one particular area.
Today, we can get around this city in more ways, not just public transit, but on bicycles. We can walk. We can choose ways besides being stuck in our cars because of you.
Tenor Placido Domingo also performed for the crowd, a fitting tribute to the city of LA, its leaders, and its proud residents. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week. And the latest month-long celebration of diversity here in the city was for the LGBT community. Rich Samuels takes us to the recent kickoff celebration at City Hall.
This year's opening ceremony for LGBT Heritage Month took place on the south lawn of City Hall with an evening reception, and the next morning with a ceremony in City Council chambers.
Today, I get to acknowledge the people in this community who represent the dream of LA, the hope of LA, and the spirit of LA.
This year's honorees included Mia Yamamoto, presented with the Dream of Los Angeles Award for her longstanding advocacy for the LGBT community.
I want to talk about our community. I want to talk about the transgender community. I want to talk about the LGBT community and how thankful we are for everything that you've done to create the kind of acceptance and embrace that we've all enjoyed.
Adam Lambert, known to millions since his performance on American Idol, was presented with the Hope of Los Angeles Award.
That's been one of my missions this whole time is to not necessarily be the quintessential gay man, but to be a gay man who doesn't want to fit in, who wants to be his own person, who doesn't make any apologies. And I think living here in Los Angeles has taught me that our community is full of so many different types of people, different colors, different ages, different outfits, different haircuts, you know, and things like that. You know what I mean?
Rodney Scott, president of Christopher Street West and a longtime leader in the LGBT community, was presented with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award.
We are gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender and proud of it. Straight and straight.
The opening ceremonies were only the beginning of a month-long celebration throughout the city of a proud legacy and a promising future. I'm Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The LGBT ceremony was the last Heritage Month celebration hosted by outgoing Mayor Villarosa. Turning to one of our city's biggest tourism events, the E3 Conference. In this year, Sony and Microsoft show off the next generation of video game consoles, drawing industry insiders, journalists, and gamers to downtown LA. Gil Reyes reports from the LA Convention Center.
The game is on. The soon-to-be-released Sony PlayStation 4 takes on the equally-new Microsoft Xbox One in the video game battle for your loyalty.
I might be switching teams. I might. We'll see at the end of the day. I gotta finish the couple days and see how it goes.
Fans flocked to the LA Convention Center to try out both competing game consoles months before they arrived in stores, one of the highlights of this year's Electronic Entertainment Expo or E3 Conference. One clear winner is LA tourism.
A lot of hotel rooms and economic impacts going to probably be about $30, $37 million for this convention, just this, you know, three or four days that they're out here. Tremendous between hotels and restaurants and, you know, retail.
PlayStation 4 coming to stores this holiday season will cost you around $400. Gamers we spoke to talked about the awesome new controls.
Just redesigned triggers, which, you know, is really big for like the shooter audience.
Along with fancier graphics, you can also play old PlayStation titles on the new system. Now to the Xbox One. On top of improved controls and graphics, you can also Skype, use the Internet, and watch TV while playing. The Xbox One costs $100 more than the PlayStation at $499.
$499 is not bad for an entire entertainment system, but I mean, for me, I'm out of school. I just, you know, I'm trying to get me a new job and stuff like that. So, I mean, I wish it were just a little less expensive. I usually wait like a year or two before and then wait for the system to come down in price before I pick something up. And then there's a lot more titles that are out for it, and then I have a lot more stuff to play.
A winning game plan for the smart shopper. At the E3 Convention in downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The LA Tourism Board predicts the E3 Conference will help bring another record year for LA tourism. Last year, over 41 million tourists visited the city of Los Angeles. From a huge conference to one a bit more modest focused on helping mom-and-pop businesses on the city's east side thrive. As Anna Marcos explains, Red Devils and Mexican snow cones numbered among the business marketing strategies.
This mom-and-pop shop is closed, but when it's open, people often line up for an hour to get a taste of raspados Don Manuel. The snow cones, syrups, flavors, and creams are homemade Mexican-style. The owners showed off their little trademark logo, a red devil, at the Small Business Expo in Boyle Heights, hoping it will help them grow their business.
How do I get more people to know about us?
What I would say with this logo here, it probably needs a little bit more refinement as far as getting to a perfect state of a logo so that they're able to use it on all kinds of different merchandising.
Some people are just looking to start a company. Some people are very established, and then there are others who are looking to expand.
The Small Business Expo gives small merchants marketing ideas, business strategies, and access to capital and the banks that have it. Councilmember Jose Weisar helped kick off the event.
We have a lot of small mom-and-pop shops, as we call them, and oftentimes, they're fending on their own, and they're just making it. And we know that they are the backbone of our economy in some of these smaller neighborhoods. And in fact, small businesses are the backbone of the economy in the United States.
We also know that a community must have strong small businesses to thrive and be successful. And we know one of the very best ways to do that is to continue to support our small businesses and provide credit into our communities.
And it's a community that's growing stronger. In fact, according to Councilmember Weisar's office, Boyle Heights and the east side have seen about $2 billion in projects and improvements over the last three years.
Every major commercial corridor on the east side in my district is getting some support. From First Street in Boyle Heights, we're creating an arts district that's bringing not only the arts to the area, but supporting local small businesses. Hunting and Drive, we've invested about $1 million in public infrastructure improvements. Colorado Boulevard, we have a plan called Taking Back the Boulevard where we're working to improve that corridor for pedestrian activity.
This event provides the extra support for all those merchants helping to bring back the community. And we get a feeling we'll be seeing a lot more of this little red devil. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Businesses and agencies taking part in the Small Business Expo included U.S. Bank, Wells Fargo, Southern California Edison Federal Credit Union, and the Valley Economic Development Corporation. And speaking of helping local businesses thrive, the city's Department of Water and Power is doing its part to help businesses cut down on waste by helping them become more energy-efficient. Rasha Goel takes us to one business that's taking full advantage of these green programs.
New lights, new benefits. Supermercado Latino is one of the first small businesses in Los Angeles to be part of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power's Small Business Direct Install Energy Efficiency Program, a program that will contribute towards making Los Angeles a greener and energy-efficient city.
We've quadrupled our use of renewable energy. We went from 3% to 20% renewables. We're cleaning the air at the Nation's Port, a 90% reduction in emissions from trucks.
Through the program, small businesses receive retrofits to help reduce energy use.
There's a lot of old fluorescent lighting. There's small fixtures that are incandescent still, halogen lights. Those are all covered by the program. We'll see those opportunities and swap them out with high-performing fluorescent fixtures. We're replacing high-flush toilets with low-flush toilets, high-efficiency toilets.
For small businesses, this program is a winning situation. They receive free retrofits, reduce their utility bills, and contribute to energy efficiency in the city. Supermercado Latino manager Brad Min says that retrofitting the lights has been beneficial for his business.
This is no cost to us. And also, it provides better light quality and makes our store brighter, making a better environment for our customers and employees. And most importantly, they will be saving, I think, over $200 a month. That adds up a lot of money.
A little saving that goes a long way. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Officials say Supermercado Latino will save about 44% on its utility bills from its LA DWP retrofit. Outgoing City Councilman Bill Rosendahl was recently the subject of a roast thrown by the LA Press Club. Anita Bennett reports no subject was off-limits as the council member's friends and colleagues give the councilman a well-deserved send-off. Politics and pot were on the menu at the Los Angeles Press Club roast of City Councilman Bill Rosendahl. The event was recently held at the Press Club's Hollywood headquarters.
Bill talks a lot about his use of medical marijuana to help with the pain caused by his cancer. Now, Bill's taken marijuana way before he had cancer.
Rosendahl, who's retiring, took center stage as a series of VIPs poked fun at the broadcaster-turned-politician and thanked him for his three decades of public service.
The thing I love about Bill the most is he's relaxing to be around because he's boring.
As you look around the room and all the folks who have come here tonight for you, it's a veritable who's who of, okay, nobodies.
The fact that the councilman was late for his own roast drew lots of laughs, while his recent battle with cancer drew inspiration.
I think there's a problem that how happy we are to see Bill Rosendahl, how happy we are to see him fight, happy we are to see him healthy and committed to helping people and have this tonight.
Your courage and your resilience is a model for all of us. When no one would have asked you or expected you to be on City Council on important issues during your treatments, there you were. There you were, every time. And you are loved by me and so many other people. God bless you and thank you for everything, Goel.
Councilman Rosendahl will leave office when his current term ends on June 30th. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. Proceeds from the roast will go toward a fund established by the Press Club to help public-access journalists get their shows on television. Local ballplayers can practice their swings on a pair of newly renovated baseball fields in Highland Park. There are a lot of improvements to mention. Gil Reyes has the bases covered on LA's newest Dodger Dream Fields.
The kids of summer take the field to practice their swings and round the bases.
Nice field. I love what they did with it. All my friends are here. I think I'll never leave.
Highland Park Recreation Center receives not one, but two renovated baseball fields in time for summer. Included are new backstops and bases, a solar scoreboard, also new turf and irrigation systems. Dodger greats Bobby Castillo and Sweet Lou Johnson, they are on opening day. So is outgoing Councilman Ed Reyes. The councilman, who has represented this community for years, throws out the first pitch.
One of the things I'm gonna miss more when I'm out of office is gonna be the smiles of the children and that energy that you see from the kids. When you look at parents and they see that pride in their face, that's invaluable.
It's nice because I get to meet new people.
The LA Department of Recreation and Parks pitched in to make improvements. So did the LA 84 Foundation, which provides surplus money from the 1984 LA Olympics to fund local youth programs.
We are committed to bringing fields like this, programs like this everywhere in the city.
And to have the Dream Field, it's exciting. It's great for our community.
Play ball. In Highland Park, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Dodger Dream Field Program has also recently renovated Little League ballparks in Reseda and Harbor City. One food bank is joining forces with the LA Public Library to make sure kids don't go hungry this summer, how you can help conserve water this summer, and helping to raise lupus awareness. These stories and more in City Beat. It may be summer vacation, but hunger doesn't take time off. That's why the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank is providing nutritious meals for kids this summer, available for the first time at local libraries, specifically the Downtown Central and Pacoima libraries. Any child at those libraries during lunch who want a meal will receive one. The launch of the expanded program helps kick off the organization's eighth annual Summer Meal Program, which serves meals to children who normally rely on school lunches during the school year. The Summer Meal Program kicked off on June 10th and will end when school begins. To find other locations where summer lunches are served, go to LAFoodBank.org. Neighborhood councils are community-based organizations with oversight by the city that advocate for and implement crime reduction programs and street improvement and beautification projects, among other priorities. Recently, the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners singled out seven of the over 90 neighborhood councils with Empower LA Awards for innovative programs.
We had a lottery, and we asked the people of the neighborhood to determine for themselves which were the most problematic locations that needed fixing in our streets and on our sidewalks.
Council President Herb Wesson praised members of these groups during a celebration at City Hall.
Give our neighborhood councils a round of applause. They work hard. They work hard for free.
The seven neighborhood councils honored were the Sherman Oaks, Silver Lake, North Hills East, Harbor Gateway North, Mid-City, Mar Vista, and Park Mesa Heights Neighborhood Councils. The LA Department of Water and Power says customers need to step up their water conservation this summer following a dry winter, the second in a row. As a result, for 2013-2014, the utility is projecting the lowest-ever water deliveries from the LA Aqueduct and the highest-ever purchase of imported water on record. One way to help reduce water use is by following with the city's mandatory water conservation ordinance that limits outdoor watering to three days a week. Which days of the week depends on whether you live at an odd or even number address. Watering is prohibited between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Go to ladwp.com/wc for more information. Council President Herb Wesson recently led the LA City Council in honoring Lupus LA during Lupus Awareness Month at City Hall.
There are more people with lupus than there are people living with AIDS, cystic fibrosis, MS, and other illnesses. But yet, it's one of the illnesses, one of the diseases that is less recognized and that there's less awareness for.
Lupus is a chronic autoimmune disease that can impact the brain, heart, and kidneys. 1.5 million Americans live with lupus, 60,000 of which actually live here in LA County. As the weather heats up, children and adults are getting a chance to chill out at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center. As Anita Bennett reports, the facility's Swim Lake is now open to the public. The summer season arrived with a splash at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center in Lakeview Terrace.
I've been coming here since my baby was born, and it's great because they can walk into the water. You don't have to worry about the kids falling in or anything, and the zero depth is cool.
It's a nice area. I would recommend it for a lot of people to come here.
Dozens of families took a dip in the water as the park opened its 1.5-acre swim lake for summer. And this year, there are some new rules in place. Small children must wear yellow wristbands, and they cannot enter the water without a parent or guardian who's been assigned a green wristband.
If we see a parent wearing the green wristband and we don't see the child, we're gonna ask you. Same thing with the child. If we see the child, we don't see a parent. So again, safety is always our number-one priority.
Another rule, mandatory bathing suits in Swim Lake.
We want to make sure that we keep the water clean. We don't want people, you know, working on their cars and they're using the same shores who come in and swim here at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center.
While some park visitors may think the rules are a little strict, Aquatic Center workers say if you break them, you may just have to contend with the LAPD. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. Hanson Dam's Swim Lake is free to children under 18. For adults, the admission price is $2 with a city-issued library card and $2.50 without one. In this week's list of things to do, a walk around the Lake Hollywood Reservoir, an equestrian ride, and the latest Siklavia event. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power invites you to a 3.4-mile walk around the Lake Hollywood Reservoir on Saturday, June 22nd. This event is a great opportunity for residents to enjoy scenic Lake Hollywood and get to know the LA DWP staff while learning about the water infrastructure and the city's future water supply. Meet at 8:00 AM at the corner of Lake Hollywood Drive and Mont Lake Drive. This walk will take approximately 1 to 1 and 1/2 hours. Bring water, snacks, sunscreen, a hat, and comfortable shoes. Unfortunately, dogs and other animals are not allowed on the walking trails around the reservoir. You must RSVP by Friday, June 21st. You can access the link at our Facebook page at facebook.com/LAThisWeek. And if you are looking for a trail ride on Saturday, June 22nd, Councilmember Mitchell Englander is leading one at Corral 54 at 10:00 AM. Corral 54, a division of Equestrian Trails International, will host the ride out of the newly-opened Aliso Canyon Park. The loop ride will be about two hours long. Lunch will be served. A $5 donation is suggested. Aliso Canyon Park is located east of Reseda Boulevard between Cessnon Boulevard and Grinaldi Street and North Ridge. RSVP by calling 818-892-3862. And there is yet another Siklavia right around the corner, this one stretching to Wilshire Boulevard. On Sunday, June 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the latest bike and pedestrian-friendly event will connect downtown LA and Miracle Mile via 6.3 miles of car-free streets. The route will take you through downtown, MacArthur Park, Koreatown, Mid-Wilshire, all the way to the Miracle Mile. Whether you're on a skateboard, a bicycle, or on foot, you'll get to enjoy art, architecture, and lots of food along the route. Go to Siklavia.org for the complete route and other related information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. There's recently been a baby boom at the Los Angeles Zoo. Anita Bennett introduces us to a trio of baby chimps.
Oh, look at the baby!
Three new baby chimpanzees are the talk of the LA Zoo.
They were really cool, and I thought they were like really exciting.
What did you think of the chimps?
They're really cute.
The youngsters were born to three different mothers over the past 10 months.
Zuri is almost a year. She was born last July. Fuki was born in March. She's almost three months. And our unnamed infant was born in April. She's about six weeks.
The six-week-old is the latest offspring of Gracie, one of the zoo's most popular chimps. She also gave birth last year, but that baby died after it was attacked by what zoo officials say was an aggressive adult male. This time, zoo officials say they've taken steps to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Right now, the male that was in that group is not with the infants. The male that we have with the infants is a really gentle, kind male. He's been around infants before, so he knows how to treat babies. He's an experienced male.
Chimpanzees are native to Africa, but their numbers have been dwindling because of deforestation, hunting, and disease. These three new arrivals bring the total of chimps at the LA Zoo to 17, making the city a leader in efforts to protect this endangered species. The chimps are currently on public display, so if you'd like to come and see the newborns, well, head on down to the LA Zoo. In Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. According to the World Wildlife Foundation, there are fewer than 300,000 chimps left in the wild. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We leave you now with more sights and sounds from the recent Celebrate LA Festival at Grand Park. See you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
My mom kept telling my dad to clear the brush from our house because it was a fire hazard, and clearing it could save our house someday. My dad kept saying he would do it someday. Then someday came, and it was too late. Don't wait until it's too late. Clear the brush now.
What's with all the zombies?
Alert LA County. It takes the surprise out of disasters like zombie attacks, and without surprise, they're out of a job.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email.
Any skills besides flesh eating? Pick that up.
Events may include disasters, evacuations, safety notices, and if necessary, zombie attacks.
Next.
Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Hi, I'm Craig Irwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Irwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.[1649.86]
Good morning, good morning. Today is Tuesday, June 18. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but I expect that we will have one shortly. Mr. Weezer, it is my understanding that you're ready for your presentation. So we will start today out with a presentation from Mr. Jose Weezer. Mr. Weezer, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And as we get up, set up here, I'm also inviting Councilmember Tom Labange, who is an alumnus from California State, Cal State L.A. And today, ladies and gentlemen, we have the pleasure of having with us a great individual that has done so much for higher education and education in general, who is an example of what it means to not only be an official in the Cal State system, but someone who also is very involved in our communities to help promote higher education, especially in low-income communities. And I'm talking about none other than Dr. James Rossar. Let's give him a big round of applause. We have him here today in council chambers because he's actually retiring, and we wanted to honor him not only for being the sixth, for having spent six years as president of Cal State L.A., but also, 34, 34, you were the sixth president of Cal State L.A., that's right. 34 years, and he was the sixth president of Cal State L.A. Here it is, for more than three decades, right? You were there for more than three decades. But we also wanted to recognize him for not only working with Cal State L.A., but for his numerous achievements and contributions to the city of Los Angeles. I'm going to read a few of Dr. Rossar's accomplishments, but know that he has done much more. If we were to sit here and read all his accomplishments, we would all be retired by the time we finish. So let me start by saying that throughout his tenure, Dr. Rossar has championed access to quality higher education among underserved communities and has promoted programs that increase diversity in education and within the, especially within the science, math, engineering, and technology communities. I recall very well when I was a president of the Board of Education at L.A. U.S.D., we were working to create more schools in the east side, in Bow Heights in particular, and we were working to promote more STEM, access from our STEM courses for students there, science, technology, engineering, and math. Knowing that we had Dr. Rossar on our side was a great feeling because he knows this area well and has promoted these areas of study amongst many students throughout his years. He earned multiple academic degrees in health education and microbiology from Southern Illinois University at Carbondale. He received a PhD in 1969, a master's in 1963, a BA in 1962. He also served as a faculty member at Southern Illinois, as well as assistant to the chancellor and founding director of the Black American Studies Program. And prior to his Cal State L.A. appointment, Dr. Rossar served as vice chancellor of the State of New Jersey Department of Higher Education. He was a member of the State of New Jersey Board of Medical Examiners. He was a tenured faculty member and senior associate vice chancellor for Academic Affairs at the University of Kansas, where he also served as a member and the vice chair of the editorial board of the University Press of Kansas. Dr. Rossar has been appointed to the boards of many national, state, and local organizations, including the Los Angeles Urban League, the California Community Foundation, the Los Angeles Harmonic Association, the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation, and the National Board of Governors of the American Red Cross, just to name a few. He has also served the business sector throughout his corporate leadership at Edison International Corporation, United California Bank, PeopleSoft Incorporated Strategic Advisory Council, and he is a past member of the Los Angeles and the California Chamber of Commerce. As you can see, he has been very involved and active, and he has received numerous awards and recognitions. He has also received honorary doctorate degrees from Southern Illinois University and Pepperdine and is a recipient of the National Science Foundation's Educator Achievement Award, a very prestigious award. So ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to present to Dr. Rossar on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, our mayor, our city council, our council president, this resolution recognizing Dr. James M. Rossar for your achievements, for your contributions to Cal State L.A., and more importantly, for your contributions to our young people who want to achieve their dreams. Congratulations. And now, Mr. President, and alumnus from Cal State L.A., our very own Councilmember Labange.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Come forward, Mr. Labange.
I sure will. I just want to thank you because you've been impactful in the lives of many. This university has trained more teachers that are in our classrooms, educating people. This university has done more with engineering and all other factors of life. And this is amazing, Joe and Herb, right now. I got my diploma from Cal State L.A., and here, years later, you got a councilman-elect from Cal State L.A. That's pretty good, too. That counts for something. Put that on your resume. Just to let you know, history, the normal school, used to be at Fifth and Flower, burned down, 1926, they built a new library, relocated on Vermont Avenue where City College is, both with UCLA. UCLA then moves out to Westwood to get away from the city. Cal State L.A. or Los Angeles State is there on the east side, and a dynamic university. But his leadership, his transformation, the building program, all that you've done, we left one big load of work, Mr. Wesson. We want to connect Cal State, Los Angeles, the University of California, State University of Los Angeles, with USC Medical Center and a biotech and connect that little county area to economic engine, the education. This is a great man. We salute him for all he does. Dr. Rossar, thank you so much. Thank you so much. That's heavy, man. That's heavy. Get right here, Betsy. Get right here. Go Eagles!
I too want to congratulate you, Dr. Rossar. I can't think of a more deserved man than you. I would seek your counsel and guidance when I was Speaker of the California State Assembly, and I'm very proud to know you as a friend. So one more time, please give a round of applause to a very great man. Dr. Rossar, the floor is yours.
Well, I would first like to thank my councilmember for this recognition today, and also want to thank Los Angeles for having been such a great partner with California State University of Los Angeles. A great many of you sitting around at the council table today, and some certainly before you, have played a major role in our ability to serve the city. We serve more low-income students with Pell Grants than any other four-year university, research or otherwise, in the United States of America. 70% of our students are Pell Grant recipients and 85% are Pell Grant eligible. We also are an institution that has served the majority of our students being women since 1970 and the majority of our students being students of color since 1972. We're somewhat of an unparalleled institution that decided that we wanted to be the city's university. You've helped us become that from the crime lab, Los Angeles County High School for the Arts, the Mark and Eva Stern Math and Science School that's a part of the Alliance for College Ready Public Schools. We've tried to reach out and be a partner with the city in helping to try to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Los Angeles and Los Angeles County. I want to thank you for 34 years of what has not been a job, but as a participant along with you in helping to improve the quality of life in Los Angeles, in this state, and in the region. So thank you very much for this recognition, Jan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, as you saw, everything we've read in his accomplishments, this is a great individual that, let me tell you, he is constantly in the community supporting higher education, never really said no when you were asked to help in an organization or volunteer in some way and give your knowledge and wisdom to all of us. And there are thousands upon thousands of students out there now who are in the math and sciences and pursuing their dreams because of your hard work. Congratulations again on behalf of the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I've been informed that we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alarcon Buscagno, Inglor Garcia, Weezer, Corret, Kocorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corret's moves, Kocorian's seconds, next?
Committory resolutions for approval.
Parks moves, Zion's seconds, next?
Mr. President, now it'd be the, today is Tuesday, and now it'd be the time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise. We will be led in our flag salute by Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry will lead us today.
Please place your hand, right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. At this time, members, when, and many of us around this horseshoe, served in Sacramento. In Sacramento, when colleagues were going, closing out one chapter in their lives and beginning another chapter in their lives, we would salute their years of service. I'm sure many of you remember a few months ago that Mr. Cardenas was saluted for 3 and 1/2 hours, okay? So I, so that taught me that we needed to make some subtle changes. So we've got some great colleagues that are going to be beginning new chapters in their lives, and I have communicated with them, and we're going to begin today with a salute. These salutes hopefully will last approximately 45 minutes, and we will put the 3 and 1/2 hours behind us. So with that said, it is our time to bring forward a mover and a shaker, a leader on this council, an individual that was in a lot of ways, single-handedly responsible for the revitalization of the southern portion of downtown of the greatest city on this planet. I'd like to invite all of you to give a round of applause to Ms. Jan Perry.
Thank you. Light on, light on, light on.
Let's give them a round of applause. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask our honorary councilperson, Jan Perry, to come up at this time. I figured if I had to stand the whole program, so do you.
Fine, fine.
It is my distinct pleasure to kick off the celebration for my colleague and friend, Councilwoman Jan Perry. And Jan, I got a special guest, wanted to introduce you in your, his role model, Gary Anthony Dancy III is here from View Park Prep, shadowing council. Where's Gary?
He's shadowing so well, I can't see him.
Yeah, where's Gary? Is he in the shadows?
He's waiting, he's trying to get in.
All right, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
He's here to celebrate your day as you is one of his role models, and he's a part of one of our magnet schools in the 8th District. So I wanted to make sure you met him personally. Jan's staff have put together what was supposed to be a brief video chronicling her 12 years in office. They asked me to reiterate how hard it was to pare it down, and asked me to take and talk a little bit about portions of the clip that didn't make it in the final product. Jan's service to the City of LA started long before she was elected in 2001. Many of you know that she worked for former city council members Mike Wu, Nate Holden, Rita Walters, and she ran the 2,000 census for the City of Los Angeles. Many know what she has accomplished. It is written across the face of downtown and South Los Angeles. People talk of Staples, LA Live, Grand Avenue, and so many of the other catalytic projects. But some, and most meaningful projects for Jan, her staff and the community were smaller and did not garner the top headlines. There were projects like the first new grocery store on Central Avenue, the first in over 20 years. When it opened in 2009, there were over 700 people waiting to get inside. It was a moment that brought tears to Jan's eyes and everyone that was involved. In fact, the staff could not use any of the photos because everyone was crying so much and overwhelmed with joy. It was also a moment like working with the link to purchase horses for the mounted unit of the LAPD Patrol, or walking the streets of Skid Row, connecting with homeless individuals and building the housing they so desperately needed. Help people get jobs and recover their lives. Seeing young people graduate from high school and head to four-year universities, making them the first to achieve their goal in their family. Helping long-neglected communities receive investments and come back to life after years of suffering from blight and crime. These are the stories that comprise Jan's term in office. When the staff went out to make a video, you're about to see, they asked many to describe Jan in one word, "Stop crying, Jan." Their responses painted a picture of who she is. In their words, she is fierce, determined, tenacious, courageous, prepared, no-nonsense, a fighter, and a doer. She's a champion for people she represents and for the city. She fought hard to improve her district and set a place at the table for all. She did it all with integrity. Her dynamic leadership, tenacity, determination, and ability to get things done can be seen and experienced throughout the district. She has set the bar very high and expressed better than anyone through her hard work how much a local elected official can accomplish for the people they represent. Let me ask those people she represented to stand up at this time, who are here to honor Jan before we start the tape. Okay, we're going to have a short, four-hour video of Jan's accomplishment. Get started. Jan Perry was elected in 2001. It marked the beginning of three terms of unprecedented growth for the 9th District with the transformation of both South Los Angeles and downtown communities. Jan started, as she always has, taking a practical look at the needs of the district, listening to the community, and addressing immediate challenges with common sense and affirmative actions to achieve solid results.
Jan Perry has taken the 9th District and elevated it up to a level it had never seen before, whether it's environment, whether it's business, whether it's just the streetscape and the quality of life. She has always focused on that street-level health of the community and produced results. She's one of the most skilled people I know in City Hall in getting things done.
One of Jan's most challenging missions was addressing homelessness. For far too long, the Central City East community, known as Skid Row, was neglected. She saw it as a community of people living and working to make their lives better. She challenged the city and her colleagues to do more. She marshaled city resources to improve health conditions, fund year-round emergency homeless shelters, and developed thousands of units of quality, permanent, affordable, and supportive housing. Jan has been an incredible leader in spearheading efforts to build more permanent supportive housing in her district, not just, you know, through us, but through the entire district. She's been our champion. There's no better way to say it than that.
Skid Row has had a champion for as long as Jan Perry has been in this building. Jan has fought for and given her all for justice and for housing and for cleanliness and for health of everyone in Skid Row.
In one case, Jan conveyed an underutilized city-owned factory to Downtown Women's Center to expand services for homeless women in Skid Row. The Women's Center leveraged the value of the building to raise $35 million to complete and open their new facility.
The impact Jan has made is huge in our area. I mean, she has really changed the face of Skid Row. For us particularly, I mean, she has made a safe haven and home for thousands of formerly homeless women.
Jan also legislated against the dumping of homeless individuals by institutions in Skid Row. This was part of a larger effort to have homelessness addressed as a regional issue.
Jan gets it, and if we had five more Jan Perrys in this county and city, we'd have a lot fewer homeless people on the streets of LA.
One of the most dramatic transformations in the 9th District and the city happened in downtown Los Angeles. What was once a sea of flat parking lots and a 95 population has been transformed into a bustling 24-hour downtown.
I credit a lot to the rebirth of downtown LA to Jan. And I'm a reserve police officer. I used to work in the downtown area sometime at night, and I remember when you wouldn't go in the streets of LA at night, you'd just stay away from certain parts of town. Now you see people walking at night, couples, kids, dogs. There's been a rebirth and revitalization in downtown that would not have happened without Jan Perry's leadership.
In her three terms, Jan supported many catalytic projects in downtown Los Angeles that represented over $15 billion in private investment, producing over $40 million in new city tax revenue, and the creation of over 90,000 full-time jobs. From the development of LA Live, to iconic projects like Our Lady of Angels Cathedral, to major public buildings like the new Police Administration Building, Jan has been at the forefront of ensuring that downtown moved forward to meet its full potential as the economic engine for the region.
She and I have been partners on Farmer's Field, on LA Live, on the Convention Center Hotel, on the building boom you've seen there couldn't have happened without her on the council.
We look across all of downtown Los Angeles, is that you have Jan Perry's fingerprints on so many positive things.
She was instrumental in supporting and championing the Marriott Hotel on the LA Live campus, understanding that it would provide the hotel rooms needed to move Los Angeles ahead in the convention and tourism arena. Jan chaired the Ad-Hoc Committee on the Convention Center Expansion and New Stadium, working to ensure the best possible outcome for the residents of the city.
We were asked to, and we would step up and make commitments to make sure that the community and the residents in the surrounding area were involved in and received the benefits of these projects.
Jan served on the Joint Powers Authority for the Grand Avenue Committee.
It was an underutilized space in downtown, and she saw the vision for, you know, a grand vision of a grand Central Park that could be a real centerpiece to downtown.
The project came to life with the opening of Grand Park and the promise of a new world-class contemporary art museum being developed by the Broad Foundation.
Jan was part of the inspiration of Grand Park and all of the reimagining of Grand Avenue, so she's been an unbelievable partner. She has been part of making the organization as successful as it has been.
Determined to ensure that downtown LA will continue to provide job and career opportunities for the residents of South Los Angeles and the city, Jan developed and received unanimous support for the Department of Public Works Project Labor Agreement that guarantees local hire opportunities at more than 98 public works projects in the City of Los Angeles.
She has helped us to go from working and employing 10 young people a year to working with over 400 young people a year, all from Council District 9.
She's been a part of local hiring for a long period of time, and so she's making sure that whatever opportunities we have, we have local hiring is put into a project.
Jan maintained her belief in the spirit and integrity of the many diverse neighborhoods that comprise downtown. She worked with Little Tokyo to preserve their history and help the Arts District through its transition from little-known neighborhood to the next big thing. She worked with the Historic Corps to champion the development of new niche restaurants, bars, and retail outlets.
For Little Tokyo, the community sees her not just as our leader, but also as a friend, whether it be pushing back against the city locating a jail next to a 100-year-old Buddhist temple, or just being there at meetings with some of the seniors who live in the area.
My area in downtown, the old bank district, was formed just as Jan was becoming councilwoman. We needed to have a lot of interaction with the council office, and Jan was perfectly suited to it because she was unique among council members in that she had a relationship with the business community, but also had a very active relationship with the homeless service providers and the affordable housing developers. She followed the pulse and the rhythm of the community, never forgetting that they were responsible for making it the exciting and growing place that it is today.
One of the things I think that she was very strong on was improving the environment, pollution issues, air pollution, also what she did to bring parks that nobody even thought could be possible to her district. She wanted to leave this planet in a much better place, and she found it.
Jan made it her mission to rehabilitate every park in the district, making them safer, and invested more than $80 million to build and restore soccer fields, swimming pools, baseball fields, and recreational centers. She has opened dozens of new pocket parks, replacing blighted property with beautiful community spaces.
Fred Roberts Park was an old park that looked like if it's been abandoned. I know at one point they wanted to take the funds that were allocated to have a brand-new gymnasium there, and when I called Jan, she would have her staff act on it, and they didn't take the funds, they built the gym, and right now, it's a brand-new park.
In 2004, Jan co-authored Proposition O with her colleague, Mayor-elect Eric Garcetti. Prop O was the nation's largest clean water bond. Using Prop O funds, Jan established two man-made wetlands in South Los Angeles. Augustus Hawkins Nature Park, the nation's first man-made wetlands developed in the urban core, and the new 10-acre South Los Angeles Wetland Park, developed with a combination of Prop O funds, state and local funds, and a lot of tenacity and commitment. The wetlands in Nature Park have received national and international recognition.
When Jan became the council member, she said to me, "You have a wetland in your district, I'm going to have one in mine." And I'm thinking, "How are you going to have one in yours? You don't have any coast in yours, you don't have any rivers in yours." And I thought, I thought she was, "This is ridiculous, how could she do this?" But she did it, she got two.
Jan served as a city representative at the AQMD and chaired the Energy and Environment Committee for eight years. She fought for greater transparency at the LADWP and worked to pass the legislation that established the Ratepayer Advocate and the Office of Public Accountability, and developed many new policies to support a greener Los Angeles.
But for the first time in 50, 70 years, the history of water and power, the people actually have a voice into water and power and have a vision, they can see into water and power they never could before. And that's because of Jan and what we did together, all of us on that.
Jan had the vision to build mixed-income communities throughout her district. She sought a job-housing balance, creating density in the urban core, and restoring single-family neighborhoods. Jan fought to reinvest and restore historic neighborhoods. Central Avenue is the crown jewel of this effort. It has been revitalized with the completion of projects that are the It has been revitalized with the completion of projects that are the integral part of her vision. This has included mixed-use development, grocery stores, senior and family housing, and community services.
A lot of people don't remember the '65 riots or the '92 civil unrest, and we lost a lot of the businesses and the stores, either from being burnt down or because people just left the neighborhood. For her to actually bring back some of the local markets for people in the community, they could shop at the mom-and-pop stores, but they could also go to the larger stores, and we had more fresh produce available to the community.
Jan developed a Gold Lead Certified Neighborhood City Hall, complete with farmer's market, rooftop garden, and community center. The councilwoman was committed to ensuring that the Paul Williams 28th Street YMCA was fully restored and put to good use. It now serves as a community workforce center, houses emancipated foster youth, provides onsite mental health services, and affordable workforce housing.
The historic 28th Street YMCA, when that project went into disrepair, she, you know, one, she stepped in and really had some, what I would say, frank conversations with the YMCA because the resource was leaving the neighborhood that had been there since the '30s. So I just remember a lot of those types of frank conversations around, "I want this project done, but I want it done in a way that's gonna be impactful to the community and impactful for a long time and respect the legacy historically that the building presents."
One of her greatest achievements is the realization of her dream to fully restore the historic Dunbar Hotel. The Dunbar was once the home of West Coast jazz and blues. It hosted jazz legends such as Billie Holiday and Count Basie in an era when Los Angeles hotels would not host African-Americans. The Dunbar will reopen at the end of June and is now more beautiful than anyone could imagine.
Her willingness to make projects and programs happen in her district that other people had given up on, I think the transformation of many lives in the neighborhood, young people, seniors, business leaders, just the transformation and impact that she had in folks' lives.
Jan imagined it all and done the work to establish tangible results for her constituents and for the generations to come. She has always known that at the core, people want the same things: to live in a safe, well-respected community with access to quality shopping, healthy food, and park and recreation facilities for families.
I see a huge difference in South L.A. since Jan has been in office. I see a reduction in crime, I see more arts and culture, there's just been a lightness there, there's been efficiency in terms of buildings, in terms of lighting, the whole boulevard of Central Avenue's been cleaned up, I've seen supermarkets come into the area. I see people who want to be there, and she's made such a great impact in the community.
You can see that she made a difference. You can say, "If she hadn't been here, maybe this place would have looked differently." You see neighborhoods that have been revitalized. She worked with people to see how they could recognize the beauty of their own neighborhood.
She really believes that people should have a voice in government, and she really believes government should be a voice for the people, that government should do good for folks, that we shouldn't just be here waiting around and managing problems, we should go out there proactively and solve them. Jan Perry is, to me, one of the most incredible people I've served with. She has brought life, verve, truth-telling, and passion to this City Hall.
She knows what her constituency in the city of Los Angeles needs, and she hasn't been afraid to do what needed to be done to fulfill her aspirations and the aspirations of the people she represents.
The Bible defines, you know, a woman of valor, and that is Jan Perry.
She's someone who has fought the good fight for the city of Los Angeles and for the people of Los Angeles, and for that, the city of Los Angeles should be grateful.
I really think she was courageous because she did things from the heart, and it was proven in the product, in the community, and she did things for her constituents.
What she says to you is what she means, and that is a rare and wonderful quality in elected officials.
She is a very strong-willed lady, and she doesn't ever quit, and it's that USC "Fight On" spirit, I think, of her. She's tenacious.
She has the courage to be strong and independent. She knows her mind, and she has a good sense of values that lead her to make a decision that she feels comfortable with, and not just a political decision, but a courageous decision.
Thank you, Jan Perry, for all that you've done on behalf of the people of the city of Los Angeles.
And I want to thank you for being you.
Muchisimas gracias, Jan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan, for creating a home for homeless women.
Jan, thanks for being a friend to all the people of Los Angeles, but specifically the people in downtown Los Angeles.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Gracias, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan Perry, you're great.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
I love you, Jan.
If everybody can have a seat, we're gonna have a number of speakers come up who represent different organizations and has had a long-term relationship with Jan Perry. First, we'd ask Tadashi Koda from the Union Church of Los Angeles to come up.
Speaker.
I'll stand next to him.
No, it's, you're sitting, I'm standing next to him.
I will sit down, I will sit down, okay.
Councilwoman Perry and your staff, although this gathering is your way of thanking each of your constituents, and we gratefully accept your sincerest thanks, but in reality, it is a time for us to say thank you to you for your leadership, your support, your encouragement, and your effective response to the needs or requests of your constituents. My most recent experience with you and your staff was at the request of the Little Tokyo Historical Society to name the plaza on the corner of First and John Isol Street in honor of Reverend Howard Toriyumi, our pastor of Union Church, who more or less saved Little Tokyo from the expansion of the civic center. I thought that it might be a slow process to receive an approval from City Hall, but received it very quickly as everyone was cooperative, efficient, supportive of our request in naming the plaza. The naming of the plaza became a reality on February 24, 2012, with the dedication service in which you participated. Certainly, the Little Tokyo Historical Society, Union Church, and the Toriyumi family extend our deepest thanks for all you did for us. Thank you for your years of dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles, and may you have a wonderful future personally and in the political arena if this is your choice. I hope that our paths will cross again. Thank you for all you have done for us, and best wishes in the years to come.
Thank you very much. Next, we'd ask Larry Roush, the chairperson of the Central City East Association.
Good morning. I'm joined today by some of our members of the Central City East Association, and I'm honored, we're all honored, to be here today because this is honoring somebody who has been incredibly important to the business community in general and to Central City East in specific. Jan understood that the Central City East area, which includes Skid Row, was more than Skid Row. It was an area that was multi-dimensional. It included business, social service providers, residents, homeless. It was a most challenging area, and I think Jan grasped that, she embraced it in a way that no one else had ever done. And the result, as you saw in the video and you've heard so far, was a spectacular performance and an effect on this city. I cannot imagine, any of us cannot imagine, anyone else having a greater positive impact on our area and on the business community than Jan has over her 12 years. I've been in the downtown Los Angeles for 40 years, and looking behind me, some of these gentlemen have been here basically that long as well, and I can tell you from all of us, we've never had anybody, we've never had a champion. You heard it on the video over and over, champion, champion, champion. That's what you always have been and what you always were for us, and it meant the difference between businesses thriving and businesses failing, and residents having places to stay and live and not, and social service providers having the ability to service their population and not. It is really you and what you did. But it was not just our area that she was the champion ratepayer, for the ratepayer advocate, and she, I'm in the cold storage warehouse business, and so I was particularly appreciative of the work that she did. She understood, always understood, how the city needs a business-friendly environment to succeed, and she was always advocating for us and for the businesses of this city to do the kind of work they have to do so that we can employ people and our employees can be happy coming downtown and having a safe place to work. And it just, there isn't really words for us to fully gather around all the respect we have for you as a person and you for your work. So earlier, all along this morning, you've heard the words "thank you," so I'm gonna end with this. The real reason we're here is to say thank you. Thank you for being a friend who was always available, and you were always available. Thank you for understanding the significant challenges of the Central City East area, and thank you for being the kind of person we need in government: dedicated, honest, principled, and always willing to take on the tough decisions. Jan, you have our undying gratitude and respect, and we love you.
Good morning. I am so happy to be here. I don't see Jan, though. Where did she go? You're over here hugging. Hey, Jan. Councilwoman Perry, it takes a long time to build communities: time and sweat and faith and laughter. It takes compassion and more than a little tenacity. It takes creativity and risk. It takes a willingness to fight hard for what you believe and also to reconsider when you realize there are other possibilities, other partners, and other opinions to consider. I know you know all of this, Councilwoman, because you've been working to build the communities of South Los Angeles for 12 years alongside many of the people in these chambers today. In 2008, I remember you standing in front of a packed house at St. Vincent's Catholic School. Both you and Councilmember Rayes listened attentively to a half dozen presentations by community members of the extensive research they'd done on community concerns about nuisance land uses and the contrasting absence of fresh foods and green space, about the need for better pedestrian infrastructure and more affordable homes, about their desire for authentic community participation in planning the futures of their neighborhoods. You listened to their analyses and proposed solutions, and when asked, you enthusiastically planted a seed, it was a freehold, actually, making a symbolic commitment to nurture our community's growth, and I believe a commitment for you to keep growing as well. And you have undeniably kept growing and nurturing. Under your leadership, we've seen not one, but two fabulous wetlands created in South L.A. along with many other green spaces, including the important plans advanced despite the turbulent demise of the CRA for our transformative seven-acre park and housing development at Slausanne Wal. You've supported a rebirth of Central Avenue with business, faith, community, and nonprofit partnerships. You've made green building possible, yes, even in South L.A. with your Ninth District City Hall, another community jewel. You sought to preserve housing for the most vulnerable folks who are dependent on downtown SROs, as a place to call home. You've shown the community great respect by acting on their quality-of-life concerns, even when it means tangling for years with Metro about being a responsible landowner or with LAUSD about being a responsible builder. You've understood that strong public policy comes through a vibrant public process, and your support of such dialogue has improved the large-scale plans for the Lorenzo, for the University Village, with significant community benefits. Our organization, Trust South L.A., looks forward to advancing the work we started with you with Senator, soon-to-be Councilmember Price, and anticipate support from Mayor Garcetti as well. With their support, we hope to take on the challenges of South L.A.'s underutilized and vacant spaces and to continue your legacy of reimagining South L.A. as a green, well-built, stable, and vibrant community. You've established important expectations of public officials: being present, listening earnestly, making decisions you believe in even when they're not popular. We hope that you're not going too far away, Councilwoman, and that you'll continue to share all that you've learned with those who come behind you. Thank you so much.
The next speaker will be Lily Mueller, artist and producer of Autumn Lights L.A.
I'm gonna launch right into it. The top three reasons why Jan Perry rocks. Number one, she laid the foundation. She came to downtown where the artists were struggling and trying to make it their home and establishing a neighborhood and community, and she saw the vision and with her creative, together with her creative, creative vision, community sense, and her courage and commitment, she made it the downtown vibrant cultural center that it is today. Number two, she's hands-on, she's visible always, and she's been in the trenches with us at all times, and showing up at every single art event possible. I mean, even if there's three people showing up and the art sucked, Jan Perry was there. She was there and supported every one of us, which made us feel like we belonged, and we also have a valid, we are a valid component. And we also have a valid, we are a valid component to the revival of downtown. Number three, she inspires. She made us all achieve a lot more by being there, having our backs, fighting for us and alongside. And she's always been there for the individual as well as the groups and everyone she's lending an ear to, thanks to an amazing staff, working on crazy propositions and crazy requests, and we all know that. She was always there, there was always an open line, they were hardworking on all of our problem-solving. I really thank everybody in behalf of the downtown arts community, the Arts District, and Autumn Lights. And my personal thanks goes to you on my own contribution with Autumn Lights L.A. for the city. She saw my vision and she supported me, and now we're in our seventh year going strong. Thank you very much, and it's an honor working with you. And I just want to say, Jan Perry brought back the long-lost heart of our City of Angels back to downtown.
Our next speaker is Ruth Schwartz from Shelter Partnership.
Thank you. Jan, I respect, where did she go again? There you go. And I love you so much that, as a Bruin, even I did the Trojan salute, okay? First time in my life, okay? Jan, you're a hero to the people in our city who are the most disenfranchised, the more than 25,000 people who are without homes. Jan's been highly focused, strategic, and relentless in her drive to secure the resources for highly-leveraged and beautifully-designed permanent supportive housing for our most long-term homeless population, leading the charge in providing for the development of 1,200, that's 1,200, units of permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless people in the Ninth District. So that deserves an applause. You've been courageous in developing new strategies and programs for the poor and insisting that other elected officials do likewise and other communities accept their fair share. But most of all, Jan, you've been a dear friend and mentor to those of us on the front line trying to improve the lives of people who have fallen off the grid and to those whose lives are being reclaimed every day. We will miss you dearly. As Martin Luther King said, "A genuine leader is not a searcher for consensus," we should all remember this, "but a molder of consensus." You, Jan, are a genuine leader.
Next, we have a city present, special presentation from Enrique Zoldiwar, Director of Bureau of Sanitation, and he'll be accompanied by Councilman Labange.
Mr. Parks, I think that at this time, to really make this presentation appropriate, Madam Clerk, we should take up item 14, I believe it is.
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, Mr. Labange, you can explain what we just...
Fourteen, fourth with, fourth with.
Fourth with?
There's a new park in Los Angeles named after Jan Perry. And, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President, for your help on that. Enrique's going to say a few words to be specific, but Jan Perry is dynamite.
Enrique.
Good morning, Councilmembers. And Councilmember Labange, just write a few words in honor of our special friend. It is my pleasure to be here today to celebrate and honor Councilwoman Jan Perry and her 12 years of dedication and service to the community. Her numerous achievements are a testament to her commitment and tenacity to better not only the lives of the residents of her district, but the entire city. If there's one thing we know about Councilwoman Perry, is that she is in touch with the community and understands the needs of her constituents. Community meeting, Jan spent over eight years attending numerous listening sessions about this very project that we're presenting in her honor here today, to present her vision of a multipurpose stormwater wetlands park. You saw that, you got a sneak preview of it in the video, the first of its kind in that urban setting. And during that quest, Jan co-authored Proposition L, the now well-established and known $500 million stormwater bond. Jan managed to acquire over $27 million from a half a dozen different sources of funds geared and intended for this very wetlands. Without her passion and drive, this wetlands would not exist today. Today, the City Council has just unanimously agreed and named these wetlands proudly the The Jan Perry Wetlands embody what has now become a model for urban stormwater runoff treatment to meet water quality standards, a model that also creates multi-benefits like open space, interaction with nature for the local communities. It is my privilege to present a replica of the sign that will now forever appear at the wetlands, at the Jan Perry Wetlands Park. It is right here.
Jan, come over here, Jan, just for a second. Behind Enrique is the great Department of Public Works, Commissioner Shaw and others who've done it to design it, which made a big difference. But I just want to tell you, I've never seen home runs hit out of the park by the speakers from Little Tokyo all the way through down to the Arts District to Enrique. And what Ruth Galanter said, that was the nicest thing Ruth Galanter ever said about anybody. And she's right, she's so right. But I want to just say, I'm so proud of you, working as a deputy in my life and as a deputy in your life, and look at the deputies out here, hard work and tenaciousness is what makes success. In 12 years, Jan Perry's hit it out. And in the darkness of the night, she's everywhere in her district, and she's very different in the district than she is in council. She's all business in here, she's all community out there, and she's so impressive. And, Mr. President, one night, she came to our home unannounced when my wife was battling cancer, and Jan Perry massaged my wife's feet and made her feel so good because she loves people and she's a saint.
Mr. Parks, I need to interrupt again, and I apologize. There are members on the queue that want to speak, and if it's okay, I would like to afford them that opportunity.
Yeah, I'm just going to get her up here so I can go sit down.
Well, you deserve to sit. I've been tired looking at you. So, Ms. Perry, will you allow me to, I think you have some members that want to say some mighty fine things, beginning with Mr. Paul Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jan, I've been honored to know you for many years, and so I've long been aware of what a devoted public servant you are. And, of course, we both have the experience of working for council members before we took office, and so we both benefited by that. And clearly, that experience taught you what you can accomplish in public service and to fight hard for what you believe in, which you absolutely have. Now, when I was elected to the City Council in 2009, we had a little fiscal trouble, which, of course, every government entity did across the country. And I think you provided, through those tough decisions, a lot of strength of purpose. While we didn't agree on every issue during that discussion, I think your tenacity and your views were thoughtful and knowledgeable and provided a lot to the discussion and the decision-making and helped us get through all that. Probably the most notable thing from my point of view that you did was contributing to this incredible vibrancy that we're seeing downtown. I grew up in L.A., I was born here, I knew downtown. It was always an area that you really didn't want to spend too much time in because of the terrible condition it was in. And frankly, it's been a revitalization that I never could have envisioned in my wildest dreams, and that really is largely because of you, so I commend you for that. And probably the part that I care about is the most is your good environmental work, whether it's creating parks or wetlands or countless other green endeavors or the good work you did holding the DWP's feet to the fire. So they're now not only fiscally make sense, but because they're more transparent, we actually can set a group of environmental goals that we have. And I think the DWP will help make us, as I believe we're on track to being the most environmental big city in the country, and I believe that's largely because of your good work. So I commend you for all that you've done in your career. I congratulate you for completing this phase, and I know you're going to go on to do a lot of other great things, so mazel tov.
Mr. Zang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jan, I've known you for many, many years. When I was with the Los Angeles Police Department, when you were working in different council offices, and we came here together in 2001 as council members, working for the people of Los Angeles. And you are a tireless worker. I know phone calls late at night about issues that need to be resolved and concerns that you have about the district you represent. You've given your heart and your soul to this city. I know days that you were on Skid Row taking carpentry, telling the city attorney, showing him the impact and the improvements. I see one of the LAPD officers, I saw him here, I think it's Officer Joseph, who patrols that area to show support for what you have done to make so many changes. And I know that you didn't receive all the credit that you should have received for all of the development that's taken place in downtown Los Angeles. The video showed some of it, but you have outreach and impacted so many lives in your time here for this 12 years. And you have a very beautiful heart, you have the ability to get things done in a manner that is so efficient. And I know the phrase you used many times, "on the record, on the record." And the record shows your accomplishments, the record shows your success. And the fact that the marching band was here to show their respect and the fact you have a packed audience here to show their love and appreciation for you, you've definitely had an impact on so many people's lives. It's been an honor working with you, it's been an honor knowing you, not only in your political world but in your private world. Because the social events that we've attended, those social events show the other side of Jan Perry, the person who cares and loves people. And that's what I find most impressive, is you have a huge heart to take care of people and to show love and respect for everyone. You've represented the community so well for so many years, the accomplishments that you have brought about are significant. And I just wanted to offer my congratulations to you because you've been a friend, been a colleague for so many years. And whatever door opens up, they say, one door closes, one door opens. So I'm sure there'll be doors opening up for you as you move forward with your lovely daughter at SC, and soon she'll graduate and make you proud once again in your, is she not here, is she? I didn't recognize you sitting there, and you should be up with mom, you should be up with mom right now. Are you in your third year at SC? Third year? You graduated? Well, I can remember when your mom was taking you to high school, and she would be driving you to high school every day and then coming to council, and you've graduated, talk about a flash. These 12 years have gone by in a flash, you graduated college. I mean, it's amazing how quickly, but God bless you and happy graduation. But, Jan, again, you have done so much, and having the wetlands aimed after you, I know how hard you worked for that, how worked for hard to make this a better place. You left your mark on the City of the Angels, you are an angel amongst angels. Congratulations to you.
Mr. Booskayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jan, being the newest member on council, I've learned such a great deal from you, sitting across from you and listening to how passionate you've been for your district and the people you represent. We often, at social events, we talked about your upbringing in Cleveland and how Cleveland reminds you, or San Pedro reminds you a lot of Cleveland, growing up in a small Italian community. To see what you've done in downtown Los Angeles, the transformation has been incredible under your leadership. And I hope and pray that I can take a page out of your playbook here in City Council in the years to come to do the same for my district from Watts to San Pedro. And I just want to stand and say thank you. Thank you for your service to our city. You've been an amazing and incredible role model to our young people in the city of Los Angeles. And I can truly testify as a police, a young police officer, 1997, patrolling the streets of downtown Los Angeles and where it's at today, an incredible turnaround. And we owe it to you, and we thank you for your service, and we wish you the best in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilman Labange. Jan, I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. I think 12 years ago, we were talking about the imbalance in the city, the infrastructure and the lack of community plans and specific plans and how we influence our environment through our planning police powers. And it takes a very strong person to endure what you are seeing every day along with your great staff, when you see how punitive poverty can be. And yet, to be enlightened by the spirit of those who find a reason to smile and get up every day and do what they do. But for you to be able to harness that energy and see the transformation that we witnessed this morning, not many people understand what that took. So I am very proud to know that I've been able to work with you these years, although and it's a little awkward to say this, but some decisions we have to make on the council floor might be some of the most hurtful, but at the same time, we know that deep in our hearts, we're doing this for the right reasons. Our work, what we do for our communities, for our people that need to move in a direction that they deserve. And I think your spirit and your heart will carry through in all the communities you represent it, and that we can actually see value in those areas that for many decades were valueless in the eyes of decision-makers. You brought it value, you brought change, and it's going to last for decades, and congratulations for that. It's been an honor.
Love you, Jan. I've loved you since the day I first met you and when you came on my show way back. Then I watched you around Nate Holden and around Rita Walters, and that background and that foundation really gave you a sensibility about this government and how it operates. And so when you got elected 12 years ago, you brought to the table a lot of tools that a lot of people don't bring to the table when they get elected to office, the experience of knowing the real issues and the real people. In fact, you taught me about the NFL, you and Tom Labange, for God's sake. Now I turn to the sports section every day, and I look at who's ahead, who isn't, what's going on, and when are we going to get a teak downtown? And I give you credit for the energy and the force that we can do it and we can make it happen. And when I joined your team on that NFL, it was with great enthusiasm for the hard work you did. Another thing I remember and will always remember is when I went to the shelter and played dominoes with the guys. It was a... So on the one hand, you're taking downtown and turning it into a beautiful new place and making it work. At the same time, you're dealing with the homeless issue. I've learned a lot about homeless issues from you and the issues I have of homelessness over there in Venice Beach. And what you've done is fantastic. And that is the kind of leadership that speaks volumes about who you are and what you really care about. Look, we've had our ups and downs. That happens in life between relationships. But day in and day out, you've been consistently a person who cares about people. I've seen the various people come up and in a testimonial way, with love and genuine feeling, express themselves about you. So I just want to thank you for sharing your time with me here in the council, and I look forward to our relationship like somebody else said, "one door closes, another one opens." Who knows? You and I might be joining hands with maybe Kevin James over there and do some talk show or something, or David Nahai and do something, or whatever. But the creative juices that you have, Jan, will certainly come forward, and you'll be able to make a continued difference in your life ahead. God bless you and thank you very much.
Clerk, if you could properly adjust the clock. Mr. Alakon.
Okay, this is gonna be good. Hey, Jan. Okay, this is gonna be good. We have my full attention. I know, I'm sitting down. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, sit down. Don't worry. Jan, I want to congratulate you on an enormous career. And to put it in perspective, having worked for Mayor Bradley and watching his dream of reviving downtown Los Angeles come to life, I have to say that he would be very proud of the accomplishments because you have continued his work and done it with such panache. And while we've had philosophical differences on certain issues, the fact of the matter is council members' primary responsibility is to take care of the ground operation. And clearly, you have done an enormous job with your district, improving for the benefit of all Los Angelinos, the downtown area. You've made it exciting for people to come from far and wide to the downtown area when, as was said in the video, people shun the downtown area. You've even spread the notion of providing better services to the homeless, and I share that concern that I know you are very passionate about with you. And was very pleased to help alleviate some of the problem by a project in the northeast San Fernando Valley that's doing very well because of you and the partnership that we had. So I have nothing but congratulations for you. I know that deep down, that we have an incredible respect for each other. You've been a tenacious challenger, but I think that in those challenges, you have made people better and demanded that they be better if they're going to prevail. And so with that, I want to congratulate you. I look forward to being your friend on July 1st and not looking back and looking forward to more opportunities and a new venture, because I think you have so much more to offer, not just this city, but this world. And I congratulate you for the things you will accomplish in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Wizar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Jan, thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles. You've done your work with purpose, conviction, and passion. And even the times when we've disagreed, there's nothing but respect for you because of those qualities that you have. And everywhere I go in downtown L.A., they not only see you as an elected official, as a councilwoman, but as a friend. I recognize that people really see you as a friend throughout downtown Los Angeles and the testament to what you see here today, whether it's in Little Tokyo, Skid Row, where you've done so much for those in need, for the service providers. And so I just want to thank you for your service. I think you are an example of what public service is all about. So congratulations to these years of service. I recall my wife working here for some time for the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families, and she would talk about your work as a city, as a staffer, and the work you guys did to collaborate for our young people. And you really do have a big heart. It's been said, but you really do have a big heart. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Mr. Englander.
Jan Perry. Tenacity, passion, focused, ethical, deliberate, yes, stubborn sometimes, for a good cause, knowledgeable, experienced, just some of the words that have been used today to describe you, all true. When I was running for office, I went to Greg and said, "If there's any one person that I should try to learn from around the horseshoe, if there's any one elected official, who would you suggest I pay closest attention to now that you're no longer in office?" So Jan Perry, without question, didn't even hesitate. And all true. I have yet to have the opportunity to see somebody so passionate and focused. And no matter what, at the end of the day, it's always about whether you're negotiating a major deal, it's about, okay, we can get the deal done, but what's the community going to get? What's the public benefit? How are we going to protect the people? How are we going to protect those that can't protect themselves? It's always been truly something that you cloak yourself in, that we can only try to emulate. And I'm fortunate to have worked with you and seen you up close and personal, carry that through every single day. And it's remarkable. And it's an honor and a privilege to have had this opportunity to work with, I want to say, the great ninth, but one of the great ones, Jan Perry. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Jan. We're going to miss you. Wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all the things you've done. And also the fact of the number of issues we've worked on together, whether it was dealing with the fast foods, whether it was dealing with specific plans, or dealing with health care, a variety of things that basically address both of our districts. And so just wanted to say that you've provided that kind of leadership, and I'm going to miss your favorite statement for the record, and I'm going to miss your favorite statement that I want to ensure that there's truth and integrity in this process and transparency. And those are the things that you were consistent on every council meeting, every community meeting. And it's just been a joy to be here as your seatmate. And as I've told you over and over again, the things you've accomplished downtown in the sense of those iconic locations, and this is not taken lightly, but just the fact that if a male had created the kind of environment that you've created downtown and across your district, we'd be looking at a movie talking about the life of Jan Perry. And so I just want you to know that I appreciate it, the community appreciates it, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
I want to jump in for a minute to acknowledge a colleague to be Mitch O'Farrell. Could you give Mitch a round of applause, wave your hand? Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jan, when I got to the council, seems like about 15 minutes ago, and was a new member, I had the privilege of serving on the Energy and Environment Committee under your leadership and serving as your vice chair. And we were able to work closely together on one tiny part of your huge environmental legacy, when we worked on the ratepayer advocate and the feed-in tariff and the solar incentive program and so many other things. And it was a great privilege to be able to fight shoulder to shoulder with you on those projects. At other times, we started off in different places. For example, with the downtown stadium, which you were the leading advocate for in this council, and I was one of those who was maybe one of the leading skeptics. And yet, even through that process of disagreement, we produced really good policy. And I think that is one of the things that I'll always remember about you most, is that you have left so much good policy behind because you're so tenacious and so detail-oriented and so willing to listen to others even while you're fighting so fiercely for your own convictions. You know, Los Angeles in many ways is, like Dickensian London, a tale of two cities. And nowhere is that more true than in the Ninth District. And as I've watched you represent that district, I've seen you speak for and on behalf of and advocate for some of the greatest corporations in America who are trying to bring economic vitality and jobs to Los Angeles. And at the same time, I've seen you fight just as hard and just as passionately and just as eloquently for the most vulnerable people that we have in this city, sometimes at the very same time, on the very same project. And so while few of us really will be able to leave the kind of legacy that you have in terms of the actual visible product of our work, which is astounding, we've, so many of us have mentioned the change in downtown through the course of your leadership. People for the rest of the 21st century will drive through downtown Los Angeles and see, as they drive, the legacy of Jan Perry throughout downtown, in that building and that building and that street, and so many physical manifestations of your legacy. But what they won't see, and I wish they would see, is the other legacy that you leave is in the human change of downtown. The countless people who have homes now, who are getting care now because of your leadership, the countless people who are escaping from lives of domestic violence because of your leadership. And more important even than that is all of the people that those people will impact throughout the course of their life. And so those ripples that you've sent out through your leadership will go on and on through generations of Angelinos, and very, very few of us will be able to have the ability to have that much of an impact through our times in public life. And I just want to say one other part of your legacy that should be mentioned. All of us, especially the newer members, who've had the privilege of sitting in this horseshoe, have watched you and learned from you and been inspired by your ability to advocate for your district at the same time that you fight for a workable Los Angeles. And so although you will not be here physically anymore after you leave that seat, I can assure you that the inspiration that you've left with many of us will inspire and improve our work as we continue to serve the people of Los Angeles. So in that respect, you're still going to be here long after you're not in that seat anymore. And for that, I thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Ms. Jan Perry, who just had a park named after her a few minutes ago.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all of my colleagues for your kind and gracious words. I deeply appreciate them. To say that it feels like yesterday would not be an exaggeration. To have had the privilege to represent some of the finest people in the city of Los Angeles has meant the world to me. To have had the great advantage to work with so many professional people here in the city of Los Angeles, all of you who have helped me do my work for the people I represent, I say thank you. You'll have to forgive me if I get a little emotional, but the people I need to thank, some of us have been together for 15 years, and at minimum, we've been together for 12, some a little bit less. But to have had a staff that cares so deeply about the issues and the people we worked so hard to help, Kathy and Mike and Marie and Ava and Stephanie and Pam Snowden, Aisha, Marta, David and Michael, Jonathan, Jason, Hugo, Senior Field Deputy Loma White, Araceli, Kathy, Jeff, and of course, Phyllis, Phyllis, Phyllis Filmei over there, these are the people who brought me to where I am, and I could not have done it alone. And I also want to thank my daughter and her dad. We raised a good Trojan. And I say, "Fight on." The last 12 years of my life have been meaningful. It has given me far more than I could have ever imagined. The day I took oath of office in 2001, from Little Tokyo to Skid Row, to all of downtown, to South Los Angeles, we have enjoyed unprecedented growth and job creation and new schools, improved parks, new wetlands, and thousands of units of affordable housing. In fact, we're going to celebrate our 18th year of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival and the reopening of this historic Dunbar Hotel. And if you think tears are being shed today, that one will be off the hook. I always wanted to have a jobs-housing balance and to build mixed-income communities. We all worked together to build Phase One of the exposition light rail to bring to South Los Angeles what they have deserved for the last 40 years, and now it's there. And sat next to Mr. Parks, and thank you very much. We established a full continuum of care for homeless people, year-round housing, and permanent supportive housing. I've done a lot of legislation. The list is really long, but I want to thank all of my colleagues who are here for voting to support the community that I was sent to represent. From the establishment of the Housing Trust Fund to land use and planning initiatives, securing our own reserve funds for stability, to the ratepayer advocate, I could have never, ever done this without you. And even though Greg's not here today, sometimes I would turn to Greg and Bernard, and I'd say, "Well, what should we do? This isn't going the way it should." And you know what Greg always said? He'd say, "Just fight like a Trojan." And then he'd say, "Vote no." I could not have done it without your help. When government works for the people that we represent, we make the best use of our process, our committee process. Our council process is here for the public to see and to hear what we are trying to accomplish for the entire city. This is the process that ensures our integrity as elected officials. I have so many people to thank. My parents, my first role models, Samuel Perry, first African-American elected mayor in the state of Ohio since the Reconstruction after the Civil War in 1966. And then my mother, who was married at 19, had three kids, went back to college in her 30s, became a social worker. Her name is Betty Jane Pulli. She became the mayor. She's the one who taught me about trimming trees and picking up trash and putting in sewer systems and being nice to people and driving them to the polls to vote. They were both civil rights pioneers, and I brought all those lessons from the Midwest to here. I want to thank all the people who put their faith in me, who voted for me, who worked for me, worked with me to accomplish. And I also want to thank the people who fought with me. I like that, too. Dissent and disagreement is what makes a better product and a stronger community. And if you come to a position honestly, it's okay to stand up and fight for it. And to the staff, all of you here today mean so much to me. I have seen all of you, and some of you, it's amazing, I know I met some of you when you were coming out of high school, and now you have gone on and got bachelor's degrees and master's degrees and just evolved into these mature, fine human beings and professionals. I am proud of all of you, and I'm proud to call you friends. And to all of the social service providers, fine organizations that have worked hard to build our communities, thank you so much. This has been a terrific day here in the chamber. This has been a terrific day here in the chamber, a terrific day for Council District Nine, but I hope a terrific day for the people of the city of Los Angeles. I just want to close by saying thank you for being here to help me celebrate 12 years of being together as a family, as a community, as a city, and just moving our future in a different direction, a better direction. Thank you very much.
Give it up for Jan Perry, her family, her staff, a grateful community. Thank you.
Oh, my God. Thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, guys. So I would like to invite everybody to come out to the Spring Street forecourt, and let's eat what's left of this food. Okay, okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's go through the agenda, starting out with the first section.
Mr. President, before we go through the section, there's requests to continue Items 1P and Q to July 23rd, 1S to June 28th, Item 8 to July 24th, and Item 51 to June 19th.
Okay, without objection, that should be the order.
Items 1 through 4 are items noted for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that the lien amounts for Items 1, J, and K should be reduced to $572.42 and $961.91, respectively, due to receipt of partial payments. Also, the department reports that Item 1A and G may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay, any cards?
Yes, cards on Item 1, Item 1, 2, and 3.
Okay, let's hold those, and let's prepare the vote on the remaining items. Let us... We ready to go? Can we go? Okay, let's... Specials members, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next items.
Items 5 through 34 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members, Mr. Weezer.
Please, number 5.
For Mr. Weezer, number 5.
15, please.
15 for Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks.
Number 11.
11 for Mr. Parks. Okay, if we could... Mr. Corretts.
Item 7, please.
Item 7 for Mr. Corretts. If we could prepare to vote on the remaining items, let's open the roll. Yes?
Mr. President, for Item 33, I believe there may be an amendment forthcoming. Wish to hold that on the desk.
Put it on the desk. We'll hold that. So now, let's vote on the remaining items, and let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, next section.
Items 35 through 49 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, there now before us, Mr. Buscaino.
Item number 47 will be circulating, a substitute motion, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll hold Item 47 for a amendment. Any other specials members?
29, Mr. President.
29?
49.
49.
Please, thank you.
Oh, what did I say, 47?
Yeah, 47 and 49, sorry.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Zine. 24 forthwith. Cards?
Cards on Items 38, 40, 41, and 49.
Okay, let's hold those items as well. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Yes?
Fourthwith on 35, please.
Fourthwith on 35. Let's go to the next section.
On the supplemental agenda, Items 50 and 51 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, now 51 is being continued, correct?
Correct.
So anybody need to speak on 50? Seeing none, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next. Fourthwith on that.
Item 52 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that is now before us. I mean, without objection. Let's prepare to vote on the item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
That brings counsel to items called special.
Okay, it's my understanding that we're going to take a few moments before we get to Mr. Weezer's issue. I think we're exchanging or changing out the crowd. So, Mr. Labange?
At the request of Mr. Garcetti, 46, fourthwith.
Okay, if you could approach the president's chair.
For Item 1 right now, want to call special? Let's... Madam Clerk, call Item 1.
Item 1, call special for cards.
Okay, we have Wendell Baker and Daniel Flores. Are they in the John Farrow chambers? Mr. Baker, come forth and speak. Mr. Flores?
I'm here today to oppose the confirmation.
Hold on just a second, hold the clock. Everybody in the back, we want to have respect for the public speaker. We could hold our conversations. Mr. Baker, your time.
Thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon. I'm here today to oppose the confirmation of the proposed lien requested by the Department of Building and Safety on the above property, which is my home. My communication with Dennis Zine's office last week and the planning deputy Doug Mensman suggested I appear and ask for a postponement so that my case can be reviewed by the council. After explaining my story to Doug Mensman regarding the past five years of my life, he sympathetically gave me a title for my situation, which is the perfect storm. I've been through an awful lot, and rather to go into detail, I have made 12 copies, and I'm asking the board to, the council, to review it before going ahead with any decision, and I think you will be surprised of what I've been through in the last five years, along with a major car accident shortly after being cited within two weeks and trying to communicate with the Building and Safety, never responding. I documented that. I was also in the middle of illegal foreclosure, which today I'm presently suing for more than 21 violations. So I documented, it's easy to read, and if you can postpone the decision on that property until you've had a chance to look over what I've worked very hard all night and haven't slept to provide you, I would be very appreciative of that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Senator, on this particular matter, I understand this has been continued for a long period of time, a number of years. Can you respond to that, please?
Yes.
No, the city representative is going to speak, sir.
Well, my name is Charles Calabala. I'm here to represent the Department of Building and Safety on Item Number 1. Now, Item Number 1, we received a check, 1A, we received a check yesterday paying these invoices off.
Are we talking about the same situation? This is, I understand, Strathern Street, 19523. Is that what you're referring to? Okay, are we referring to 19523 Strathern? That's the one that this gentleman is discussing, sir.
Strathern, oh, that's...
Aye. Item 1 number, aye.
1 aye.
19523 Strathern, a lien of $2,733,33. Want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I think we are on the same page. Let me get the Item 1 in a second.
I was told this has continued for a number of years, and I want to verify and see if you have any information on that.
No, this hasn't been continued. I think this is the first time we bring it up, and I request that I get some time to talk with the property owner regarding this item.
Okay, so you want to hold this, you think you can...
Yeah, I saw this for a couple of weeks.
Give a continuation for two weeks on aye?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, sir, you need to discuss it with the city representative here. So, Mr. Chair? If we can continue this Item Aye for two weeks?
Is that all right with the applicant? It's okay, we'll continue it two weeks. Mr. Flores? I know you were asked to speak as well. Mr. Flores, still here? Mr. Baker, we're going to continue it two weeks. Okay, thank you, Mr. Zine. Have your top deputy handle it.
That's until July 2nd, Mr. President.
Two weeks, but it will be another meeting. Are we on the 2nd? Are we meeting on the 2nd?
Yes, Mr. President.
July 2nd. Is that okay with you, Mr. Zine? I want to give it another week.
Let's do it before, can we...
Before recess.
Before the recess. I prefer to do it before the end of...
Before his time.
Before the end of my time.
June 26th.
25th? Oh, that's two at the 25th. We'll continue to the 25th.
25th, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Note, Mr. Baker's card and also Mr. Flores' card, so that's continued. Mr. Buscaino?
Fourthwith on 23.
Fourthwith on 23, so ordered. All right, we're done Building and Safety. We'll continue to the 25th. Next item.
Mr. President, council should vote on the remaining items in Item 1.
All right, for the remaining items of Item 1, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes, so ordered. Next item.
Item 2, call special for cards.
John Walsh, Mr. John Walsh. And as Mr. Walsh walks up slowly, raise your hand if it's your first visit to Los Angeles City Hall in the chambers. Very good, special welcome to all of you. Here comes Mr. Walsh. Thank you very much.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Forgive me, I got emotional about what just happened. Number 2, HollywoodHighlands.org, we're asking you, we're asking you to vote in favor of this. Why, Lord, America, we want Jan Perry back!
All right, that's the only card that we have. 5507 Hollywood Boulevard for Acting School, Mr. Walsh. Next item, let's vote on this one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Next item. Mr. Walsh, on 3, are you okay with 3, or you want to run back up here, Mr. Walsh? Item 3, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Pass. Have a good afternoon. All right, let's, on 3, Patrice. So we got it down, 3 is in front of us right now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. President, Items 2 and 3, fourthwith, please.
Fourthwith on 2 and 3.
Item 38, call special for cards.
38, special by cards.
You called 3. I think I put 4 down there, didn't I? Can you check that card again?
We'll double-check. You're on this one right now. Thank you.
Okay, on 38, this is Department of Building and Safety, a salary recommendation from Mr. Raymond Chan. I think he should be paid $1 million a year. I mean, I think we should raise everybody's salary at least 300%. And if I don't get a chance before, and it's, you do a great job, Mr. Labange. You're a fantastic person running the meeting, and especially since you haven't even charged me a second yet. HollywoodHighlands.org, check out, and if we don't get no... What you just did was raise the price of getting into the zoo. We don't need to see jackasses at the zoo and pay for them. We can see them right here.
Thank you very much for the compliment, Mr. Walsh. You're included in that as well, so I wanted to tell you that it's so nice. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Walsh and I have known each other over 35 years. He's been a great advocate for youth, believe it or not, and school teaching, and lives in the Hollywood area. Mr. Walsh, your next item is number 40, right?
Excuse me, Mr. President. For Item 38, the salary for the interim general manager of the Department of Building and Safety is $220,033.41 per year.
Very good, and it's worth it for Mr. Chan, a very effective leader. We thank him for his service. Fourthwith on that item. Next item.
Item 40, call special for cards.
And Mr. Walsh, would you like to speak again as well?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Check out the digital picture we just put up of Hollywood 2020. Number 40 is important, this is a green issue. I'm 100% in favor of green. I was born green, and then later turned blue. The number-one thing on the DWP thing that we want to say is that we would like you to add an amendment to this, and the amendment is, we're not going to let New York beat us. New York is now going to compost everything, while this city is full of garbage, present company excluded. We want, Bloomberg has gone 100% compost, where is little tricky Ricky Garcetti? I want Garcetti today to say, this city, 100% compost, and we will beat the city of New York, which has 4, 8 million people.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this.
On the deadline, HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, good. Let's open the roll on that, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Next item.
Item 41, call special for cards.
One card, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Dude. Here, Mr. Dude, come up here right now. Mr. Walsh passes. Run its clock.
I know, I know, I didn't write Mr. Dude on my card. I wrote my name, Juan Alcalá, in every card. Last time you said I wrote Mr. Dude, you were lying, but that's okay.
I know you from the years. I apologize. Mr. Alcalá, go ahead on the issue.
It's not a big issue, you know? Consideration of motion relative to the construction of a single-family home located... See, we have to go around asking you permission to build a house for somebody to live in? It's totally wrong. People should be able to build homes and live in them. You should not have a society of homeless people. You should not have landlord and tenant fights anymore, because everybody should have their own place, be their own landlord. We don't need this way of doing business. It is against human dignity.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
All right, please, to the issue.
Yeah, the issue is, we have to ask you permission for every single little thing we do, and you ask for thousands of dollars. we do, and you ask for thousands of dollars for every permit.
He still is not talking about this item.
All right, thank you very much for your comment. No others, no other speakers on the queue or cards. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Yeah, item 15.
Item 15, call special by Councilmember Labange.
Public here has already held on item 15, so we will note your card. Juan will note your card. This issue here, members, I want you to read it. This is to remember those city employees on the Thursday before Memorial Day, all veterans. Is Patrice, Ms. Maddox, Commissioner Maddox, would you go to the center table real quick? Just give us a brief report on this issue. Public Works Department, every Thursday prior to Memorial Day will celebrate the memory of engineers and others who've lost their life in serving the city.
That is correct. Thank you so much, Councilman, and I just appreciate you for being a cheerleader on this issue, and I'd like to acknowledge our Council President Weston and all the honorable members of City Council. You are a cheerleader, Councilman Labange, in so many ways, for the city family, from the LED lighting crew outside today, to honoring our very own Councilwoman, Jan Perry. As you know, we and the Public Works family have actually lost an employee, it was years ago, Mr. Rory Shaw, but we'd like to thank you for acknowledging the workers of the city of Los Angeles. As we know, LA fire and police officers face dangers every day, but before council, even at, we had a housing department member that had a gun pulled on him recently, I think in the last like month and a half. But for all the workers, for the city family, we acknowledge them and we celebrate them while they're here with us serving, but I think it's wonderful that we will celebrate them in the event that they lose their lives in the line of duty, and they will always be remembered. And thank you so much, thank you so much for doing this, for the, on behalf of Public Works, and I understand also on behalf of the Department of Water and Power, we really appreciate you doing this for the community at large, as well as the city family. Thank you.
Okay, you good, Mr. Labange? Thank you, Commissioner. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, before we go on to the next item, I want to reiterate or restate an announcement that I plan on making before we actually begin work every day, and I just got sidetracked earlier. We welcome the members from the public who have come down to testify from time to time. On general public comment, you're given, depending on our calendar for the day, you're given two minutes, and you can speak on just about any subject or topic that the city has some jurisdiction over. On general, I mean, on specific items that have been agendized, you have to speak to that item. The moment that you deviate from that item, you forfeit your time for that item. If you disrupt the meeting by leaving the podium and you continue to talk, you will be asked to leave the chambers for disruption of the meeting. Okay, with that said, Mr. Weezer, we're going to go to item five. I do have a couple of questions for you, though. We have heard this item, we've had public testimony on this item that I'm aware of on at least three occasions where everyone was afforded the opportunity to speak. I think it's time for action, and I believe that we will proceed without public comment on this item.
Yes, Mr. President, pursuant to our regulations and rules in council, we had hearings in our committee meeting, and the public comment is not required in council, but we did have at least two meetings in the last couple of weeks, so we're ready to move forward and have a quick presentation by myself and other discussion by council, and then take a vote, Mr. President. So should I start?
That works for me, yes.
Well, thank you very much, colleagues, and, you know, about a year ago, we voted to move forward in asking our city attorney to draft an ordinance that would ban plastic bags at certain stores, and also to encourage people to use reusable bags. And this will affect actually the 2 billion bags that are used each and every year here in the city of Los Angeles. These bags, as you know, we discussed a year ago, that they become trash, they clog our gutters, they pollute our river, and they trash our beaches. So we wanted to make sure that we move forward and hopefully clean up our environment, but also have the city save costs by ensuring that we no longer have put the money in to unclog our gutters and clean up our streets with the number of plastic bags in our streets. And when this issue came up, and I became the chair of Energy and Environment Committee, I had been in that committee for some time, and I changed my tune, I think, in terms of supporting this, when I was taking a ride with my kids down the San Gibo River, and it was very unfortunate, but all you saw along that river were plastic bags wrapped around trees, and it was just an awful sight to see. My kids asked me, they said, Dad, why doesn't, why aren't they picked up? And I told my kids, well, they are picked up, but there is a proposal in the city of Los Angeles to do something about this. And so that's when I got to work with the proposals of this item, Mr. Coretts and the other members of the committee, to move this quickly. And I want to thank our staff, Public Works Commissioners, our Bureau of Sanitation, who have worked very hard in the last year to draft the ordinance and to put out an environmental impact report, which our committee adopted just yesterday and forwarded to council today. So I want to thank our staff and also our colleagues on the committee who have really asked some very good insightful questions in committee. We had thorough discussion. All of them have brought to the forefront the pitfalls and the benefits, and I think we're ready to move forward today. Mr. Coretts, I want to thank you as well for all the work you've done. You have been on this for quite some time. And Mr. Reyes, actually, I recall, we looked back and saw who was the first person to actually start talking about this, and believe it or not, it was 10 years ago when Mr. Reyes asked us to look at the plastic bag issue in our own, very own LA River, when we wanted to clean that river up. So we've been looking at this for over 10 years. The time for action is now. The state unfortunately did not pass their proposal. We are without a statewide law, but the LA County has a proposal that is similar, if not identical, to ours, and it will be consistent for our consumers so that they don't get confused as they go out and do their shopping. So with that, Council President, I ask and urge support for the committee's recommendation to ban plastic bags as outlined in our city attorney report in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, Mr... Okay, listen, let us, I tell you, I tell you what. I'll cut a deal with you. If we pass this, then I'll let you give us a rousing round of applause, but let's save it. Mr. Coretts, followed by Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I think the ultimate compliment for a city council member to hear at the end of his or her last term is, you're leaving the city in better shape than you found it. We certainly heard that about Jan today, and I know it's true for all the rest of you who are leaving. We're leaving the city in better shape than we found it. And together with the mayor, we've achieved historic environmental change. We got the DWP off coal power by 2025. We increased solar with our feed-in tariff. We've improved air quality at the port by over 50%. We got Measure R through and have significant new transit programs and projects in process. The Expo line is well on its way, and so much more. And I know the city is going to miss all of you for your excellent environmental stewardship. Richard and Dennis, Bill and Ed, Jan, our mayor, Antonio Vierigosa, Eric, although I think we'll hear a little more from him in the future. And today, we're taking another big step forward, this time by protecting our oceans and making our neighborhoods cleaner by banning plastic grocery bags. It's taken a major team effort to get us there. And President Weston, I want to thank you for scheduling this now so we can have this council, which started the issue and has worked so hard individually and collectively to finish it together. Of course, I have to thank, as Mr. Weezer did as well, Councilmember Ed Reyes for starting the ball rolling way back in 2004 by having the city attempt to protect our beloved LA River by asking the Bureau of Sanitation to figure out ways to get plastic pollution out of our waterways. Councilmember Greg Smith and his chief of staff, Mitch Englander, and another hard-working staffer, Nicole Burnson, also worked on it. Richard Alarcon and Bill Rosendahl and their staffs have worked on this. Jan Perry did an E and E. I'm sure there are many others that I'm missing, but each team moved forward and educated more people. I appreciate Councilmember Krikorian seconding my original motion and sticking with me on this issue, Councilmembers Zine and Labange for their support in E and E Committee, and our new mayor, Mayor to Come, Eric Garcetti, for his strong support on this issue. I also want to thank Councilmember Weezer and his staff, who really carried the ball on this, Enrique and sanitation staff, who put so much time and effort in on this, working with the business communities, with the grocers, with the environmental community, to make this a win-win for everybody. And I'd like to ask everyone who's here in support, since you won't get to speak, to please stand up. Thank you. And I'm happy to say, we've now studied this issue thoughtfully and thoroughly. I'm pleased with the EIR and the ordinance. We added a line that's in the LA County ordinance about protecting old-growth forests from being used for paper bags. We also, in response to health concerns, asked that we have tags with washing instructions on the reusable bags. So now it's finally ready for primetime, and I urge your support right now, today, so that this council and this mayor can make this happen and get the credit they deserve for all the years of good work.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Englander. Mitchell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of people asked me my position on this over the last few years, and I've had some concern over passing a bag ban here in Los Angeles, but only if we just did it in Los Angeles as an island. A lot of the issues about unfair competitive advantage, not having businesses have the opportunity where shoppers will then just go to a store simply across the street, but I'll tell you what's unfair. What's unfair is having these millions of bags, tens of millions of bags, clogging our storm drains, ruining our environment, getting put in landfills that take thousands of years to disintegrate. Being the district furthest from the ocean as well, the bags that end up in my district travel the furthest and clog everything and kill animals and native habitat. They degrade our society. And if you look at the cost to society and the cost of cleanup, it's enormous. The fact that we're not doing this in a vacuum, the fact that LA County has already done this, the fact that right now in the state of California, 20% of the cities have actually moved to enact this legislation, with the city of Los Angeles now will be 33%. I want to applaud Alex Padilla, that has been a true leader on this council, who took this bill to Sacramento and continues to push for it. And while it's temporarily halted, somebody had said failed earlier, because I don't think it's failed, I think he's still pushing forward, we send the message to our legislators that we have to do the right thing, that we have to be stewards of the environment, that we have to ensure that we protect our communities. And the other part of that is that I've got Sunshine Canyon landfill, one of the largest landfills, municipal landfills, that takes our trash, in other words, in my district, in the entire country, Sunshine Canyon. And we've been working really hard over several years, working with Greg and many others, and Nicole, and a lot of people in this, in this building, to end our dependency on landfills, and send the message that we've got to stop the practice of digging a hole and throwing our trash in it. And it's the same thing every time we go to the store and get a plastic bag. It's not about consumer choice, it's about consumer responsibility. That's what this is about. And so it's going to take some time. There's an educational component in teaching people and educating people and getting them used to just simply reusing bags. It makes a big difference. We also have tremendous wins in my district, so every one of these bags end up as a flying kite throughout our community. They end up in the trees, they end up in bird's nests, and they cause havoc to society. And so I proudly stand and support this terrific piece of environmental legislation, and I'm proud to be part of that. Thank you.
Enrique, you weren't paying attention. Anyway, Mitchell, I agree with you, Padilla's legislation is not dead. Those of us that are from Sacramento know that legislation is like a vampire. It comes back to life. So let's hope that some life is blown back into this piece of legislation. With that said, Mr. Rosendahl.
Indeed, Billy is getting up for this one. Well, here's the bag. This is a Vons bag, I might add. Ralph has a bag. So those two groups have decided it's time, okay? It's a no-brainer, I've been fighting it for eight years. My seatmate was Greg Smith. He'd mumble it and talk it and louder, yell at it, go back and forth. We were angry, because it's crazy. I represent the ocean over there, and if you want to see a fish destroyed, go see what plastic does to a fish, what it does to the food chain, what it does to life itself. And if we don't start now, and then we got to go to this one of these days, and get rid of those bottles and go to that. But this is a historic step in the right direction, and the state better get its act together, and those politicians up there better realize the real special interests are the people. And the people matter, and the fish matter. Pass the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, all right now. Okay, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Can I have the staff come up for a minute?
Okay, staff, please come forward.
While they're coming up, I would just ask, is there a possibility that we could suspend the rules and allow folks that have been here for two hours, at least of short time, to speak on either side of the issue?
Now, I'm going to adhere to the policy that I set, Mr. Parks. I'm sympathetic with you, but this has been heard on several occasions, and I think today is a day for action, but the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask Enrique, where are you? Okay, okay. Let me just ask, there's been several documents that we've been able to get through the internet and the variety, one from the University of Pennsylvania Law School, that came out in November of 2012, also one from Clemson University dealing specifically, and this came out in 2013, that specifically deals with a number of issues with the environment and concerns about whether our information in our EIR is accurate. And the thing that struck me right off the bat was in Pennsylvania's study, they actually say that they've examined deaths and emergency room admissions related to bacteria in the wake of the San Francisco ban. They found that both deaths and ER visits spiked as soon as the ban went into effect. Relative to other counties, deaths in San Francisco increased by almost 50%, and ER visits increased comparable amount. Subsequent bans by other cities in California appear to associate it with similar effects. Conservative estimates of the cost and benefit of the San Francisco plastic bad bag ban suggests that health risks they imposed are not likely to offset by environmental benefits. Did you, are you familiar with that study? And was that part of our EIR?
Councilmember Parks, I'm not particularly familiar with that one study. We do have cited, we have cited a number of other studies that have demonstrated and indicated that there is no public health risk. But like any other consumer product, these reusable bags need to be kept clean. And you heard Councilmember Coretts talk to the fact that we are requiring that there be a care instruction in each of these bags so that folks know that they do need to be wiped clean, they need to be washed, depending on what ends up being put in them, but they do require it to be clean.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think that's one of the points I'm concerned about in the community of... In the community, a great part of the community I represent, many people are trying to make a decision whether they can afford food, and yet we're telling them now, we want them to put it in a bag, that now they have to wash it after each occasion, separate it from each other for cross-contamination. And then, if the literature is accurate, many of the bags, not the ones that you issue, but are available for sale in the store as multi-use, also have a lead problem that could cause even greater concern about illness and a variety of other things. So we're basically putting it on their shoulders to maneuver through this maze of the economy in which many of them are just trying to figure out how to buy food, and now we've imposed this other standard on them.
Well, Councilmember Parks, we want it not to be any cause for concern or alarm by any stretch of the imagination. These bags go through consumer protection testing like any other consumer product. We ourselves have done a number of tests to ensure that there is no such thing as lead or any other toxic substance in them. But it's a consumer product, so there are safeguards around it like any other consumer product. And the last thing we would want is things like lead be in the bags.
When you refer to that, you're referring to bags that you issue or bags that are under general economy to be sold?
Well, there's consumer protection for all products in the general market economy. For the ones that we have control over, we do our own tests as well.
Okay, but have you made any assessment on those that are being sold in the general market?
There's now independent testing that is required. There's a company that is in the business only exclusively for the testing of these bags throughout the country and throughout California. We ourselves have a number of requirements in our, in the ordinance that you will be approving today, that you will be voting on, I shouldn't say you will be approving, that you will be voting on. There are protections for such things as any lead or any other kind of content that may find its way, so that we ensure that none of it ends up in the bag.
I'll push my button again.
Okay, now, I've got four speakers on the queue, but if it's okay with you, I'm going to bump Mr. Coretts because he has answers to some of the concerns raised by Mr. Parks. So, Mr. Coretts, if you could be directly hit the point, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I know Mr. Parks has been concerned about possible health impacts of reusable bags, and I don't blame him partly because the plastics industry is putting out so much misinformation designed to scare people away from them. We've taken a look at a lot of these so-called studies, and we haven't found much that is actually scientific about them. I mean, just like the San Francisco study, after the so-called Oregon norovirus scare, my office emailed Bill Keen, the author of the report, and here's what he said, quote, "Number one, this story has nothing to do with disposable bags, reusable bags, or anything similar. It is about how when norovirus-infected people vomit, they shower their surroundings with viruses that can later infect people. In this case, it was a reusable bag and its contents, sealed packages of Oreos, Sun Chips, and Grapes." He also said, "The real message, if there is one, is, one, don't store food in bathrooms, or if you must, take it out before people start vomiting." The Deputy Director of the Acute Communicable Disease Control Program for L.A. County's Department of Public Health also came to E and E last week and basically refuted the San Francisco study in committee. Now, this interest in health effects of bags made me look further at plastic bags. And there is a warning on the label right here on the bags that say, "To avoid dangerous suffocation, keep this plastic bag away from babies and children." The U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission receives an average of about 25 reports a year describing the deaths of children who suffocated due to these plastic bags. Almost 90% of them are under the age of one. So there are actual reported deaths from plastic bags, and none that are remotely credible from reusable bags. The danger of plastic bags is enough that there is a California state statute requiring this warning, a suffocation hazard, directly on the bags. Unfortunately, dolphins and turtles and birds and other marine life who choke to death on plastic bags can't read these labels.
Mr. Coretts, next time, let's find answers that don't include vomiting. Mr. Zion.
Thank you. The bag clearly states inside that rinse or hand wash with warm water and air dry. So it gives you a warning to clean the bag. But it's interesting what the bag says. If you look at, take the time, "I'm helpful, I love shopping, please don't leave me at home," which is one of the biggest issues. Take it with you when you go shopping, don't leave it at home. When in doubt, keep it in the car, which is obviously the easiest place. When you go shopping, you get it out of your trunk or your backseat. And the one I really like the most is, "I love L.A." And what this tells me is that we are following what other cities have done, what L.A. County has done, what Johnny come lately to. It's not like we're coming up with something new and revolutionary to help reduce the landfill and to help with the plastic that disposable, not, well, disposable, discarded, I should say. It's an environmentally sensitive issue, and we are, as we know, destroying our planet. And as we continue to destroy the planet and don't care about it, or the population, human and others, we're just simply going to go into oblivion. So it's a great idea. I support it in committee, continually support it. It's reasonable, it's common sense. The only thing we need to emphasize to folks is to carry it in your car so you'll be able to take it in the store with you. And when they start charging the 10 cents, people will say, "Let me go out to my car." Then they'll remember. So we want to give that advance notice out. It's a great thing, 25-pound capacity, so it's something that's long overdue, and I'm glad to see that sanitation's going to move forward. We talked about enforcement in committee yesterday and how that's going to take place. All the answers that we had were resolved in committee. The public spoke. There's obviously some opposition, but I have found that no matter what you do, you're going to find some people that don't like it. But for the people of Los Angeles, I think the majority will like this. It'll be beneficial to our great city of the angels. So Enrique, a good measure. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me thank Mr. Coretts in particular for his leadership on this issue. I know that for more than a decade, Mr. Coretts has been working on this specific issue from the time that he was a member of the State Assembly until now. And I know, excuse me, when I was elected to the Assembly, they were still working on that project in 2006. And Lloyd Levine at that point had authored a bill that would encourage voluntary recycling by the grocery industry, and several of us who wanted to enact bag bans at that time gave the industry an opportunity to prove itself. And yet, despite that, here we are in 2013, and we still are not where we need to be in terms of handling this gross component of the litter stream in Los Angeles. And people ask, why are you bothering to deal with plastic bags? What's the big deal about plastic bags? The truth is, this city spends, how much, let me ask staff, how much approximately does this city spend every year in cleaning up plastic debris that is littering our streets?
Well, we've had two significant expenses. One is that we have spent over $40 million in putting the trash screens in the catch basins. That's over $40 million in investment. We spend over $2 million a year just in cleanup related to debris and catch basins and the storm drain system.
And one of the most significant components of that trash in those catch basins is single-use plastic bags. So the city is spending millions of dollars every year in cleaning up this garbage left behind by careless people, or that escapes from cars, escapes from trucks, escapes from stores, goes into our streets, goes into our stormwater system. Millions of dollars that could be spent on parks, on fire service, on youth services, on all the things that our constituents need. Millions of dollars we're spending, number one. Number two, the ocean that this city is so dependent upon for so much of its job, so much of its industry, so much of what we're known for throughout the world, that very ocean, our beaches are being littered and destroyed by these plastic bags. Marine life is dying from ingesting these plastic bags, not just on our coasts, but as far away as Midway Island. There's marine life that's starving to death because of plastic bags that it ingested that washed down from Mr. Englander's district and from my district through the L.A. River into the Pacific Ocean. So enough talking about this, enough waiting for the legislature to someday act on this. Let's take a lead. The time to take action is today. Let's make today the day that this city leads our state, leads our country, and finally takes action that we need to take to get rid of these plastic bags, get them off of our streets, get them off of our beaches, get them out of our ocean. The time is now. Please vote aye.
Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to talk about my mom. My mom raised eight sons. My mom said, "Always recycle," because she was a child of the Depression. And then my mom's in heaven now, but she left a little legacy to her sons. Recycling is real important. This plastic bag that goes down the street, that blows its way into the drains, what are those drains called? I know Jan Perry has a wetlands, but there's a screen on the drain. What are they called?
Catch basin screens.
Yeah, but what kind of catch basins? There's the first ones you put in, but the second ones you put in.
Well, they're, oh, they're Tom Labon's design, I'm sorry.
Yes, very much. I made these corrections. I want to know, I got a screen named after me, Jose.
He does have.
These bags right here have seen its time. They've seen its time. And even with CDs, they're coming out with, and I don't even know if they make CDs, and my wife criticized me, now there's iTunes now, but everything's going the right way. I love Dustin Hoffman, I love The Graduate. And they said it was plastics, but today we say no more plastics. And so I just want to thank the staff, but also mostly thank those who are in the streets right now, cleaning up the city, trying to prevent it. Louis McAdams and everybody who has an advocacy for the L.A. River, they're making a difference. The cleaner the city, the cleaner the streets, the cleaner the streets, the cleaner the drains, the cleaner the drains, the cleaner the river, the cleaner the river, the cleaner is Long Beach San Pedro, the cleaner they are, the fish are happy. I'm happy. Vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, I rise to address the issue of the perceived public safety issues. And you know, there probably are some cases that could be argued that somebody would be negatively impacted or hurt by these new bags that are coming out. But I equate this, and I equated this in committee, to the seat belts. I remember when people would argue that people will get trapped in their cars when they're burning and you can't get out because of the seat belt. And in fact, that does happen. But I think 99.9% of the people now believe that seat belts are safe and they're good and they're saving lives, and I think the record is pretty clear on that. The same thing with the motorcycle helmet law. You know, people, even today, are still protesting that, and yet we know that the helmet laws absolutely save motorcyclists' lives and lives of other people related to those kinds of accidents. This is clearly a cultural shift, that we are changing the way people think because we know that if we do this, in the long run, there will be tremendous benefits that are gained from it. There may be, there will be negative impacts. There will be some job loss, hopefully temporarily, but those jobs will be replaced by new industries and new manufacturing operations and new people that are working in a different kind of bag industry. And so when you look at the final analysis, you have to admit, this is going to be difficult. I said in committee that I'm an addict to plastic bags. I use them for everything, you know, I reuse them, by the way, at least I can say that much. But at the end of the day, our society needs to wean ourselves off of these plastic bags for the benefit of, not just the fish, but for the benefit of generations to come. And I believe that in doing so, by looking at the macro picture, the lives will be saved in the future. Our environment will be cleaner, and the next generation will be challenged with continuous improvement, with other ways to improve upon what we're doing here. If there's a problem with bacteria in these bags, then we'll figure out a new way, but that doesn't make the plastic bags any better. And so let's continue to move forward on something that should have been done a long time ago, especially in the city of Los Angeles. And I too want to say thank you to Paul Coretts for carrying this over the end zone line. You know, a lot of people have carried this ball, but it was Paul who actually scored the touchdown, and we want to thank him for that. So with that, let's do this, let's make our city a better place in which to live.
Okay. I'm going to call on Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Weezer, to close. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Let me ask you, Enrique, have you made any assessment, or is this in the literature about the potential of 1,000 to 2,000 jobs lost in the L.A. region? Do we support that, or do we know if that's true or not?
We have done a job analysis with regards to potential loss, as you heard some of the comments. You know, there is a translation, a transfer of job types. You know, I can tell you, for example, when we changed in L.A. from the old, every homeowner having their own trash can, to now the city provided trash cans, we went away from what used to be an old market for tin cans and, in many cases, old plastic cans. And that became a transfer of technology and a transfer of jobs to what is now a new market, a new technology, but still jobs being created and involved.
Is that new market available? Because the concern I have is 1,000, 2,000 people lose their job. Are you telling them down the road, there's a new technology, or is there something they go into so they don't miss another payday or something?
I don't pretend to want to speak for the companies, other than we know that a plastic-making company can quickly retool. We've seen it. I told you, I saw it in the trash cans and the automated recycling cans. They retooled quickly. And so they know the market business, I mean, they know the plastic industry, and that knowledge translates to a different kind of tool. So it's really a different tool, still.
Let me ask you another thing. In some of the literature, they talk about increasing the number of paper bags will add additionally to the paper stream that is more severe than what plastic has caused. Is that your assessment?
From an environmental impact?
Yes.
Well, Karen, do you want to speak to?
Karen Kokop, Bureau of Sanitation. It was actually found that the 10-cent store charge on the paper bags is a disincentive to consumers, so that L.A. County actually spoke to us and said that paper bag use had gone down from before the single-use plastic bags were banned. So not only were there no single-use plastic bags coming from the stores, there are less paper bags being issued than before the ordinance was adopted.
Okay. Let me ask, another issue that came up is that, whether you have any sense of this being accurate, when the single-use bags are eliminated, the expectation is that the larger trash bags will become more plentiful, and also the multi-use bags. Are either one of those recyclable? The larger trash bags or the multi-use bags?
Yes, they are. In our blue bins, we take all types of plastics. So polypropylene, the HDPE that they make, the thick, the black trash bags, the big ones, all of that is recyclable in the blue bin right now.
Okay. And then the 10 cents to the store, being that the packaging of groceries is included in the price, what is the additional 10 cent to the store for?
Well, the 10-cent store charge will include offsetting any additional costs that the store has to change over. It also will create the disincentive, of course, for the consumer, but also in our ordinance, we ask them to use any remaining money to educate the public about reusable bags.
And my final question is, what is the approximate amount of money does the city spend in the multi-use bags that they currently distribute?
Well, we've purchased a number of different types of bags over the years. We've paid everything from $6 down to 34 cents each.
Do you have an annual cost?
Annual cost? We budget $100,000 for bins and bags. It's a line item in our budget.
And Councilman Parks, Capri Maddox, President of the Board of Public Works, I would like to provide further information as it relates to the job loss question. We have Commissioner Nutter that is here, and he is our labor expert on the Board of Public Works. However, I would just like to give you a summary that we did have three factories come to testify about the jobs issue in 2011, and they've continued to come and testify. We have Epsilon Plastics in Rancho Dominguez, Omega Extruding in Compton, and Crown Poly in Vernon. We may note that none of these companies are within the city of Los Angeles. Job loss anywhere in our vicinity would have an impact on our local economy, so we do appreciate the question. However, there is an opportunity for some of these folks to be retooled and to have an opportunity to make reusable bags that will be beneficial to our society as well as to those workers. And I don't know if Commissioner Nutter would like to add any additional comments.
I think we're always concerned about the potential for lost jobs. I've represented manufacturing workers for much of my life. And we had the company Epsilon and Omega, Epsilon from Vernon and Omega from Compton, came in with workers and talked about the problems of job loss. As it turned out, neither of those companies made grocery bags. We next had Crown Poly came in and talked about the 300 workers that they had working in Vernon, and they're concerned about the loss of grocery. And we asked them, how many of those jobs were for making grocery bags for the city of L.A.? And they said about 7% or 8%, and that about 65% of their production was for grocery bags. So that would result in a calculation of about 15 jobs for that company per year in the city of L.A. that would be tied to our action today.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Weezer to close.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. And I think this has been a good discussion. We had various discussions, not only on this council floor, but in committee. And before I close, I do want to thank some of the advocates and people who have been through this discussion throughout the years. Many of you are in these chambers now. You've followed this issue. You've given your testimony over numerous hearings. And there were a number of organizations who initially were not as crazy about this policy, but eventually worked with them. Several industries that we worked with to help get us to the point we are, and I think we do have, as Mr. Coretts said, a win-win situation here. And you know, as we as a society disturb the natural state of our planet, we want things quicker, faster, as efficient, and that is what plastic bags bring to us. But when we find that there's a higher cost to that benefit, we must change our ways. And we're doing that with this law today. And we're going to send a message to the rest of the country, possibly the world, that we are changing our ways for the betterment of our planet, for our future generations. And the city of Los Angeles, once again, is leading the charge to make sure we have good environmental laws that will protect our planet for the future. Council President, I call for an aye vote on this. It's been 10 years in discussion, one year of hard work. Let's get this going. Thank you.
Okay, let's see what we can do here. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 1 no.
All right.
But ordinance will be held over for one week for a second reading.
We congratulate each and every one of you on your hard work, but we have other work to do. Madam Clerk, I didn't hear you. Some of Paul Coretts's noisy friends were here. We didn't hear what you said.
Mr. President, that ordinance will be held over for a second reading in one week.
Okay. Now, didn't we hold, Mr. Coretts, it's my understanding that on item 7, Mr. Coretts, it's my understanding on item 7, you've been satisfied on that?
Yes, I can go on consent.
And the public hearing's already been held. No speakers in the queue on item 7. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next, we're going to do item 47, or is that 42? 47, which was held by a card, Juan Akala, item 47.
A substitute motion has been circulated for this item.
Okay. Juan Akala, if you want to speak, you should come up now, item 47.
No, I don't have anything to say on that.
Okay, well, let's vote. The amendment has been circulated. Item 47, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Fourth with. Okay, it's my understanding there'll be no amendment on item 33, so we can proceed with the vote. Is that accurate, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so on 33, let's open the roll. No cards. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Parks, I think you held item 11. And I'm sorry, then, somebody should have mentioned to me, because we would have either brought them both up, or I would have made sure I went to this item before the plastic bag item or directly afterward. So that's my mistake. I slept that one. So, Mr. Parks, the floor is yours.
Okay. I just wanted to call it to vote no. Appreciate Mr. Weezer bringing it to committee, but my concern is, the committee's report doesn't address any of the issues in the motion. So I just want to vote no on the receiving file.
Okay. We will afford you that courtesy. Okay, we're now going to vote on item 11. Mr. Parks is asking for a no vote. No. Yeah, wants to have his vote recorded as no. I don't understand what that make that different from what I said, City Attorney, but I'll take you at your word. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. 37, fourth with. Okay, where's Buscayino? Okay, we're taking up item 49. We have cards on that, Mr. Buscayino. You want me to call the cards, or would you like to speak on it? Okay, John Walsh, Donna Pierman, and Juan Akala on item 49.
A substitute motion has been circulated for this item.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Point of order, substitute motion has not been made available to the public. If you do not make it available to the public, that is a violation of the Brown Act. So I would like to see it posted right over here immediately, or a copy being given to us. That is the law. You can follow it or not. Okay, this motion, I don't know what it is now, is money coming from MTA to do some work at the Redline Station. The city would do the work. Of course, we trust the city more than we trust MTA, and that is really saying something about MTA. This concerns a Redline Station enhancement. If you want to know more about the Redline, come to HollywoodHighlands.org. Negotiate and execute a MOU with the Community College District. This money will be going to Redline near the Community College District. In fact, this memorandum here, this agenda item, doesn't say much, and since we have no idea what Mr. Buscayino was changing it, we have no idea really what this is about. HollywoodHighlands.org, go now.
Okay, but wait, Mr. Labange. I want to ask the City Attorney to respond to the last general public comment speaker.
The CLA just checked the board, and the motion for item 49 is on the board.
Thank you. Next, Donna Pierman. Donna Pierman, come on, Donna.
Well, it might be on the board, but I don't know exactly what they're going to be doing to enhance the Redline Station. I certainly hope in the Redline Station that you have, make sure the escalators work and that you don't have escalators standing, because I've been there plenty of times where the escalator has been standing and people have to walk all the way down the escalator. And why can't you have elevators on both temples, near Temple and First Street? Because I saw somebody with a wheelchair, they couldn't figure out how to get them out to go all the way to the other side. So what they did was they apparently helped the wheelchair down the stairs. So I certainly hope there is, there should be a way to get the wheelchairs down the elevator if they're near First Street. So I certainly hope that is in the area also for the Redline Station. And I would like to see more seats, because when you go on in, there's no seats, hardly, just a few of them. And if you, they're all filled up, there's nowhere for the disabled to sit. So I certainly hope that is also in the Redline Enhancement Program, because if you want people to take it, let's make it convenient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akala.
Well, somebody was talking about vomiting earlier. I'm going to talk about diarrhea. This morning, I had diarrhea.
No, you're not on the topic. Your time's expired. No, no. Your time's expired. I said, lay down the rules. I have to run this meeting. Look, your time has expired. All right, let's prepare. Oh, maybe we should, you have something else you want to say? Mr. Labange?
Just to let you know, on the public, these are enhancements on the Redline at Los Angeles City College, and also at Trade Technical College in Los Angeles. This is a great thing that Mr. Garcetti is putting forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Where does that bring us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's a request for item 48 to go forth with.
Fourth with on 48.
Special one motion has been circulated. The City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that the City Council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of suspects who violently assaulted a transgender individual on May 31, 2013, in the vicinity of Hollywood and Vine. Immediate action is required in order to apprehend the suspects for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Labange.
Captain B. Grimala here. This is a heinous crime against transgender, and it's necessary. I give a minute, if you could just give us a brief, Captain Grimala.
Wait, let's vote on the findings first, Mr. Labange. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, it is now before us.
Captain Grimala, please explain about this horrific crime against a transgender individual. It's unnecessary, and someone knows something we want to find out.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. On Monday, May 31, about 2:30 in the morning, in the iconic intersection of Hollywood and Vine, four male suspects engaged in striking and kicking a transgender female several times, causing major injuries and hospitalization. We believe that there are witnesses within that intersection that day who could come forward and be prompted by the consideration of a reward for their apprehension. Also, being Pride Month, we would be very honored and appreciative if a reward could be approved, and we believe it will be fruitful.
Thank you, officer. Okay, Mr. Walsh just got his card in. Mr. Walsh on this special one, Mr. City Attorney?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, same address since 1976. And you know, we've been getting up here, month after month, year after year, and saying that Hollywood has enormous problems with rape. It has, Hollywood and Vine, within one mile radius, is the rape capital of Southern California. It's out of control. I live there all the time. I listen to people screaming. These people are raped on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Finally, we are getting some, I'm glad that now, after it happened, and Garcetti is in, that now we're getting some satisfaction. Now we're getting the police to agree. Remember, it was psychotic ravings of John Walsh 10 days ago, and now it's Grimala saying it. And she said the same damn thing I said. It's dangerous. Stay away from Hollywood.
And no other speaker cards on this? No speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Thank you very much, Captain, for your great work and the work of the officers in the Hollywood area. Pursue this with vigor. Fourth with on this item, fourth with. Next item.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment.
John Walsh, followed by Larry Green. Note, Larry Green has left the building. Note that. Followed by David Hoffman. David Hoffman has left the building. John Walsh, please.
Always a pleasure to speak in front of my favorite councilperson, Mr. Labange, who once represented me. I didn't move, the district moved. HollywoodHighlands.org, we have put up there now a digitally, just a few minutes ago, a digitally enhanced picture of what Hollywood will look like when, by the year 2020, with a homeless person. And it's an incredible picture. It is what's going to happen after this meeting. There's the Millennium Hearing. They want to build these skyscrapers. I hope that you've retained your backbone, Mr. Labange, and you will continue to oppose the gigantic, huge towers that would surround Capitol Records, a block from where I live. I'd like to say that, again, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles is Gil Garcetti. It's the 3G network. Gil Garcetti and Boy Garcetti. We're talking about, and incidentally, I don't want to hear another, this coronation of the mayor is happening on Sunday. So that's Sunday, the 30th, we will have two mayors, two mayors for one, because Eric will be the new mayor and Antonio will be clinging. I'm very happy to see that the criticism of the mayor, the current mayor, is exactly what, in the L.A. Times, is exactly what I've been saying for two years. Now, my psychotic ravings, as always, has become conventional wisdom. Of course, if you wait long enough, everything I say comes true. And it's all up there on the website now. There's 100 posts up there. There's a new one up today, HollywoodHighlands.org, and then click over to J. Walsh Confidential. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
David Hoffman of Santa Monica, California.
Yeah, last week, I talked about Glass-Steagall Banking Law reinstating that, and to stop the budget cuts and to stop the bailouts. I'd like to continue in that vein. You know, a lot of times, we talk to elected officials, and they say they want to give Dodd-Frank some more time, they want to give it a chance. Well, the Dodd-Frank bill is a real fraud. It's phony. It was written by Goldman Sachs, got 1,000 loopholes. And as a matter of fact, we know from a joint paper done by the Bank of England and the FDIC last December, that they're getting ready for the next round of collapse for what's called bail-ins, where they're going to take people's deposits, like they're doing in Cyprus and in Spain right now. And they got the regulatory agencies already set up, getting ready to do that. Anyhow, we have another state that passed, they didn't pass it, but they introduced a resolution, New Jersey. So there's 22 states, including the New York Assembly. There's 65 cosponsors into Congress, and there's a bill in the Senate now. But it's a real fight, because the banks are putting pressure on the Congress not to do this. Anyhow, I have a model resolution for the city of Los Angeles to consider. I'd like to pass it out to all of the members.
Sergeant, you could add it to the sergeant. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
I'm sorry?
Add it to the sergeant.
Okay, well, let me just ask, anybody like to cosponsor such a bill?
This is just public comment. We don't answer questions.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Juan Akala.
See, a minute ago, you did not understand what I was trying to say. There is no bathrooms in the Red Line. I had diarrhea. You talked about vomiting, and that was fine. I started talking about diarrhea. In the Red Line, there is no bathrooms. See, that's the way you think, very limited. We need housing for everybody. Everybody needs to have a bathroom. Everybody needs to have a kitchen. Everybody needs to have a bed, a bedroom. You people are totally limited. I said diarrhea. You all shut me up. I was gonna tell you, I had a very bad case of diarrhea in the Red Line, and I could not find one good, clean toilet. Who the hell builds a transportation system without toilets? What is wrong with you people? See, diarrhea is okay. Vomiting is okay, but you gotta have services to take care of those necessities. Everybody needs a home where they can go to the bathroom. Everybody needs a home where they can sleep without the policeman coming and beating you up. You spend millions of dollars beating up on the homeless. Why don't you spend that money on providing housing for everyone? We all are a bunch of idiots, spending millions or nothing. Spend them on housing for everyone. Stop being a bunch of idiots, all of us. All of us are a bunch of idiots. And the minute somebody starts speaking, and you don't understand, you better shut up.
Miss Wanda Solomon, Miss Wanda Solomon. Okay, and Sergeant, tell the last speaker you can address that with the MTA 555 over on there. Dan Sellers, Sellen, is Dan here? Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Kocorian before?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that item number 10 be sent forthwith, please.
I'm here to speak on the behalf of the LaRouche PAC, again, the Glass-Steagall Law. Mainly, my comment is, we need the North American Water and Power Alliance. With that put back in, we'd put people back to work. And being out of work, I think I'd enjoy going back to work. That's all my comment is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan. And let's have James Stewart.
James Stewart of Panorama City. I was here to speak against the bag ban. You started late. You had us sit through an hour of Love Fest, and then you silence us. How dare you treat the people of Los Angeles that way? When the public wants to speak, they should get to speak at all times, in any hearing, in any committee, in any city council meeting. This was an abomination. And by the way, this bag from the city of Los Angeles Department of Sanitation was made in Pakistan.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Please do, for the public's benefit, the requirement on public comment, which was made in committee. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Under the Brown Act, if a hearing had been held in committee, at which everyone was given the opportunity to speak, then when it gets to council, council does not have to reopen public comment.
Because we do work in committee. Mr. Stewart, have a nice ride back to Panorama City. Next speaker, Mickey Jackson. Note and file, next speaker, Donna Pearman. That closes out public comment today. That's the last card that we have, Donna Pearman.
Okay, quickly, I want to say, some people don't like going to tunnel, so that shouldn't, because of earthquakes, so they should enhance other ways for people to get there. And I want to know, luckily, I had this plastic bag, because my paper bag fell apart, and so I needed to have something to hold my stuff. So you should give usable bags. Anyway, thank goodness, miracle, thank goodness Mariposa didn't come, because she would have to wait outside. Thank you, Mr. Parks, for thinking of the public. The rest of them did. City Council members can speak on item each and every time. City Council and private speakers can divert their speeches and speak about items not relevant, but we have to, and you don't care about the feelings of the public. First, I want to say that I meant to say that Villarreal Gosa spent $75,000 for one event, when Villarreal could have lit Disabled Services Fund at $10,000 for the Valley to speak video conferencing for a whole year. With a fraction of that money, we can let people know they can speak out at Van Nuys and San Pedro by video conferencing, and tell the council how they feel. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, right, but to...
Mr. City Attorney, would you help us here? Donna, are you okay?
Okay, I'm still there.
Who you calling on your phone right now, Donna? You calling Miriam?
Okay, and, oh, yeah. And, oh, damn it, I can't find the other one. Okay, and they spent $300 percent increase. Surely, they can come up and advertise it with that amount of money. And it's, they say, let's see, okay, it shows, Dwight said, you don't care about the public. You had people come over here, and you weren't ready when they had, you had people standing outside for about an hour, sitting on ledges.
All right, Donna, that's very good now. And then we have requirements today, a number of people in this room. Have a good afternoon, Donna. We'll see you again. That completes our public comment for today. Madam Clerk, anything else before us?
Council has motions for posting referral.
So ordered. Any announcements, members? Any general announcements? Adjourning motions? All rise for adjourning motions on this date. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
Sir Chair, Irene Doris Minzer, passed away June 15. Irene Minzer was born September 29, 1923, in Michigan. 1946, she married Saul Minzer, started their family in Los Angeles. Loving devoted wife, mother of two, raised two children, Dana Smith and Gary Minzer, proud grandparents of Josh and Aaron Smith. Three great-grandchildren, Sophie, Riley, and Dylan. In addition to her family life, she volunteered countless hours of helping hands Cedars Sinai Hospital, was a beautiful-spirited woman who will be missed by all who knew her. May she rest in peace. She is the mom of Gary Minzer, the owner of Hollywood Toe. I've known Gary and the family for many, many years. Irene Doris Minzer, may she rest in peace.
I'd like to second that, co-present with you, Mr. Zine. Wonderful family. Mr. Englander?
I had the same one as well, so if you could add my name to it. And I'd also like to add that services will take place Thursday, the 20th, at Hillside Memorial at 12:30. The address is 6001 West Centinela Avenue, L.A. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. It's with heavy heart that I adjourn today in memory of Michael Charles Giardino, who passed away suddenly on Sunday, June 9. He was 48 years old. Michael was born in Rochester, New York, on April 16, 1965, to Matthew and Sharon Giardino. He married his high school sweetheart, Tammy Giardino, on July 4, 1995. Michael was a longtime resident of San Pedro. He graduated from Mary Star of the Sea High School, where he played football in 1983, and worked at Swiss Dairy for 21 years. He is survived by his wife Tammy, mother Sharon, son Anthony, daughter Amanda, sisters Francine and Melissa, and a number of nieces, nephews, and cousins. The visitation was held yesterday at McNerney's in San Pedro. Funeral mass was held this morning at Mary Star of the Sea Parish, followed by the burial at Green Hills Memorial Park. May Michael Charles Giardino rest in peace.
Members, I'd like to ask, we adjouring memory, Thelma Golds, a loving mother, a loving wife, survived by her son Gary, wonderful person, lived a full life, Thelma Golds. See, no other adjourning motions. Go ahead and serve the city well. This meeting is now adjourned.